Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Robinsdale Area Schools School Board to order. Today is Monday, April 7th. It is 6 o'clock. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Director Bassett. Director Bowman, that's me, I'm here. Chair Evans Becker.
Here.
Director Hillenbrand.
Here.
Director Holmes.
Here.
Director Long.
Here.
And Dr. Stallow.
Here.
Righty, thank you. We have a quorum. We are ready to go. First item on our agenda is approval of the business meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and...
Suck it.
Moved by Holmes, seconded by Hillenbrand. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, a nay. We have an agenda. And actually, it's a pretty exciting agenda because the next thing on our agenda is to swear in our newest board member, Dr. Kenneth Wutel. Welcome. Okay, first off... Share that. First off, Dr. Wutel will publicly affirm his commitment to the oath of office by reciting the oath of...the actual oath of office.
I, Kenneth Walanyo Wutel, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this day, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Director of the Robinsdale Area Schools Independent School District 281 to the best of my judgment and ability.
But there's more. Wait. In order to follow state statute, Dr. Wutel needs to state any conflicts of interest that he might have and declare them before us.
Yes, I wish to declare that my wife works in the district and as a teacher, so I shall not be voting on any teacher contracts.
Now, would you like to...
She's white.
Yes. Board Chair, Dr. Evans, pretending fellow board members, students, staff, community, members across the seven cities, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude for the privilege and honor in joining the school board. I am deeply committed to serving, and I come ready to engage and collaborate. I bring with me the lens of my lived experiences as a parent, a father, an immigrant, spouse of a district employee, but most importantly, a proud member of this community. Guided by evidence and data, grounded in self-awareness of my own biases, I aim to contribute meaningfully as we collectively refocus our district on a shared goal, ensuring that every student is empowered to learn in the ways that honor their individuality. Together, we are building a future, a community that reflects the values that we all cherish. As Davis Campbell and his colleagues emphasize in their book, The Governing Core, I believe that my addition to the board marks the beginning of a new chapter, one that energizes our collective work and strengthens our strategic and systemic efforts. Let us remain focused on the essential matters that move our district forward, always aligning with our mission to inspire, educate, or learn us to develop their unique potentials and positively contribute to their communities. I am hopeful that through strong governance, instructional as well as administrative leadership, we will continue to position Robinsdale Area School District to be the choice for all families and a destination for the community. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity, and I am ready to serve.
Now, this is a big deal. So, do you have your family here to take a picture, maybe? And then after that, we'll do a board...up here. Come on, family. Separate from the rest of them.
All right, who over here?
Okay, board members, we'll do this snappy, right up here. This is for the handbook and our oral official. You gotta go through. Everybody. Oh, just smile, please. Then it won't be muggy. Muggy, got it. Yeah. Oh, God.
Okay.
All right, let's cozy up along here.
We're handling now.
All right, are we ready?
I guess.
Okay.
Ready?
Ready.
One, two, three. One, one, two, three.
All right, that sounded like more than...
That's...that's what you do. That way, there's some...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
If there's a picture that looks anything close to that one, that's a...
That's you.
That's right. I'm pulling you.
All right.
All right. Okay. And I think I left my stuff over there. Okay.
Is that your pen?
No.
Oh, I think it's Greed's.
That is mine.
Mm-hmm.
And this is me. That's you.
So, in the meantime, what is wrong with this...this...
Well, that was fun. Now, let's see. All the way down to number four, Ardell Proud. Can you take it for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, Principal Jackson and I think some of her other colleagues will provide information regarding Robins Break at Robinsdale Middle School. These occasional movement breaks occur in the gym and outside the last 10 minutes of lunch. Movement opportunities include basketball, walking, volleyball, soccer, double dutch. To participate, the students just must keep moving. Robins Break began at Robinsdale Middle School on Monday, January 13th this year and will run through the end of the year. So with that, I will invite Principal Jackson up to the podium, please. Thank you. Thanks for being here and sharing this highlight with us.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I would like to introduce two members of our amazing admin team, Ms. Colleen Kennedy and Ms. Noelle Nelson. And they were the brain children. This was their brainchild. But before we get started, Ms. Kennedy has graciously agreed to read the land acknowledgement and the mission statements. Well, we already had it from Dr. Wutel.
So, we acknowledge Robinsdale Area Schools is located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and held sacred these lands, and we stand with the members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of the Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty. The mission of Robinsdale Area Schools is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. So, how many of you remember middle school? I see two of our Robins right here. They're living the dream right now. Raise your hand if you remember middle school. Everyone in here has completed middle school, right? Okay. How many of you remember actually having recess during middle school or some sort of physical activity outside of physical education? Not too many hands. So, that's why we came up with Robins Break. So, studies have shown that recess benefits students by increasing their level of physical activity. It improves their memory, their attention to detail, and concentration. And I'm sure our two Robins would agree with that. Additionally, it helps them to stay on task in the classroom, and it helps them to impact middle school students specifically because they are improving their social skills, their movement skills, their cognitive functioning, and overall well-being to help them become better students. And what is Robins Break? As you see, it was the brainchild, as I said before, of our admin team. We were looking for a way to significantly decrease the amount of office referrals that we were having due to lack of movement or lack of just positive social interaction. And because of that, we researched the benefits of recess in middle school and adolescent behavior. I will give you this information before we leave today. And we wanted to make sure that we increased positive interactions, not only between students, but between adults and students and adults with other adults. Because guess who participates in Robins Breaks, too? So, because of that, we wanted to make sure that this helped us with our physical and mental health, and we wanted to make sure that it was aligned, of course, to our strategic plan, which is rediscover Ardell, our school-school improvement plan, and we wanted to make sure that we supported our professional learning communities who are also a part of this impetus. And in order to do that, we had to look to see how we could actually get Robins Break going. And as you see, it is occasional movement breaks, the last 10 minutes of class or the last 10 minutes of lunch. The children have already eaten their lunch, and they get dismissed in a systemic and orderly fashion to come into our gym. And we have strategically placed activities in both gyms, As and Bs. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So, when you are in Robins Break, you have, as Dr. Stallow said, you have to keep moving. And if you choose not to go to Robins Break, this is also an opportunity for you to practice your social interaction with each other. You can read, and this is all happening in the cafeteria. You can read, you can have positive conversations with your friends, or you can just chill out and get your mind right for the next period or the next class. Next slide, please. So, let's get moving. The plan is to get people moving, students and staff. And it's a way, of course, to make sure that our students are enjoying this time with one another. So, we have a way, non-verbally, to let our students know that we are having Robins Breaks for the day. That means that we would come, our zone captains, which is how we dismiss or interact with our children during our cafeteria time, they will come around and, non-verbally, let our students know that we are having a Robins Break. This is also done in our advisory classes as well. Something else I want to let you know is, when they are dismissed, they get a chance to come into the area and have ropes, volleyballs, basketballs, and other activities. And some of them even bring their own sports equipment to enjoy Robins Break with. Next slide, please. And as you see, we do utilize champs in everything that we do because we like everything in decent and in orderly fashion at Robinsdale Middle School. And because of that, we want to make sure that we are setting the expectations for success in everything that we do. And because it is so important for our students to understand that everything we do is to promote learning and safety and well-being, we want to ensure that they understand the expectations prior to going into Robins Break. So, they walk calmly through door seat, they have fun, and all they have to do is make sure that they help us put the equipment away and are listening to the instructors in there, which we are part of that, and exiting through specific areas and returning in an orderly fashion to their next assignments. Next slide, please. So, let's play. How do we play? We have half-court basketball, we have double dutch, we have volleyball, and everything is aligned, as we said, to our strategic theme of Theme B, which is student engagement, and the objectives one through four. And it's aligned to our school improvement plan because it is, first of all, dealing with school climate. We're having a safe and supportive climate, which also will affect positively our reading and our math scores. Next slide, please. So, we have some testimonials, as you see. And as I said, it has increased positive student and staff interaction, it's increased our physical and mental health, some of us have even lost a few pounds, it's decreased referrals for fighting and physical altercations, and it's also decreased tardies back to class because several of our staff members are walking and talking with our students as they are moving through the hallways and up the stairwells. Next slide, please. And now I'll let my two colleagues take over from here to talk about Robins Break in action.
Important to note, while the admin team was the brainchild of this program for Robins Break, this Robins Break was taken to our support team, professional learning community, and they are the group that took it on to create the system and the structure and reached out to all the stakeholders involved that created this program. Because there are a lot of stakeholders that had to help create to make this happen. We had to reach out to our cafeteria team, our custodials, our special education department. We had to reach out to all the general ed teachers. We had to come up with the equipment to get some donations, so we had the extra equipment so we weren't sharing and taking from our PE classes. We also had to create the systems just alone in the gym, the different quadrants, the signage. There was a lot of work that went into beforehand to create the systems and the structures to make sure it was safe. And then we had to also talk about the communications to our families, to our teachers, to our students. Robins, what do you think of the Robins Break? Thumbs up? Micah, come on. Come on, you're killing me. I know for a fact, I saw you as a sixth and seventh grader. You love being able to go run around and play basketball. I know for a fact you do. I've been watching you do this. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Little testimonial.
One of the things that we struggled with the most as a team in the cafeteria, as a catalyst school, our cafeteria team struggled with was the last 10 minutes of lunch every day as our students got done eating and they get squirrely. And that's when our behaviors were really upticking. And now that they know they have this Robins Break and that they can go do something else, the anxiety level, not only for the students, but our staff, has decreased. And like, there's a calm sense in both spaces, and it's just a beautiful feeling. And right now, the next step that our professional learning community is tackling right now is how now to move outside, because that's what the kids want to do next. And so, we're trying to figure out, because it's a very short amount of time, so how do we get the entire sixth, seventh, and eighth grade class to move quickly out to the turf and then back inside within that very limited time period? Because we don't...some of the classes...oops, I'm sorry, that's the microphone. Am I talking with my hands? Some of the classes could have a little extended amount of time, but like, one of our lunches goes right into their next class period, so there isn't as much wiggle room. So that's what we're kind of playing around to help support where we're thinking to go with next. But it's been an absolutely amazing opportunity, and watching the staff interact and play double dutch basketball is probably one of the highlights. And if you're ever able to come and visit Robinsdale Middle School, I would highly recommend coming during Block B for anybody to see Robins Break because it is to see the students in their element on either side, in the cafeteria, just socializing and hanging out, or in the gyms. It's truly a magical moment.
And there's been just a few times where we've...every once in a while, you'll get a slow serve for lunch, and that happens. And so, we can't do Robins Breaks on those days, and it's...it just happens, and our teachers know right away. We don't have to tell them because they can tell, you know, that the students come up a little different, you know? But we've really noticed a difference in our afternoons, that it's going much smoother after a Robins Break.
And we did have some in...we had some action shots in here, but we also had some movies in here, some little snippets, but that obviously didn't make the cut. But we want to encourage you all to come. Bring your gym shoes and wear comfortable clothing because you will be interacting, you will be playing volleyball, and you will be walking around and talking and socializing. And the kids get a kick out of me when I try to do my shake and bake and my jump shot because they didn't know I was that girl. So, we really want you to know that, as we were researching this, we also did a survey for the children to ask them how they felt about Robins Break. And our next step, of course, is to do a post-survey with the students and staff to see what they thought of Robins Break and if they would like to continue this in years to come. Our outside component is to increase our Gaga pit whenever we get it so that we can have that as a way to incite movement. And of course, we have those beautiful fields outside, so how can we get some relay races going? So we are constantly thinking of a way to evolve Robins Break. And I will now thank you for your time and turn it back over to you, Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No questions.
I have one. It's wonderful. Thank you. Did you have a quick comment?
It's a quick question, and I apologize. I've been a little distracted. My laptop is crazy, and so when the meeting starts, I gotta be ready. So I've been doing this, so I apologize for that. But how long is it? I was trying to listen, but I think I missed that part.
10 minutes.
They gotta move fast.
Yes, yes.
I know, it's not long enough for any of us.
Well, they love it.
Thanks for that warning, so when I got somewhere with my tennis shoes.
It really does. 10 minutes does wonders for them. And I'm sure, Dr. Wutel, I will pass this to you. If you could pass them to your left, a little information.
Thank you. Director Holmes, did I see a hand?
Yes.
How many lunch periods do you...you run three?
Three.
And then which staff are out? Is it the core teachers or you all or...
No, we actually...so our cafeteria teams are made up of our allied teachers, and then we have our grade-level support teams that help with each lunch. So they're grade-level lunches. We start with our eighth-grade lunch, then we have our sixth-grade lunch, and then our seventh-grade lunch.
Thank you.
And our support team are our school social workers, our school psychologists, our us, of course, our GLCs and our EA security and the counselors. Everybody is there, and that's a way for them to see us in another light other than just in the classroom with them or in the hallways. It's a way for them to actually interact with us on a different level and for them to see that they can just be kids and we can be adults interacting with kids in a positive way.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Stallow?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Evans Becker and School Board Directors. As you have already heard twice at Robinsdale Area Schools, our mission is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and to positively contribute to their community. Our collective work is focused on this mission, and tonight I'd just like to share a few of the things in which we have been engaged. First of all, we are proud to share that the Adventure Club, our elementary before-and-after-school childcare program, has been named the number-one summer camp by Sun Post readers. This recognition reflects the dedication of our staff and the meaningful experiences they create for students each day. Adventure Club provides more than just care. It offers enrichment, connection, and a safe space for students to learn, play, and grow with a focus on respect, nurturing relationships. The program exemplifies our district's commitment to student well-being and strong community partnerships. Congratulations to the entire Adventure Club team for this well-earned recognition. On March 21st, sixth-grade students at Sandberg Middle School hosted a Science and Imagination Fair showcasing creative projects that reflected their learning and their commitment to environmental stewardship. Each project was built using recycled materials and focused on strategies to reduce pollution and litter in our communities. This hands-on approach allowed students to apply science concepts in meaningful ways while certainly looking to innovation and problem-solving. Family members, school staff, and fellow Sandberg students were invited to view the displays, making the event a true celebration of community and student learning. On March 26th, middle school students from across Robinsdale proudly represented their schools at the Minnesota Urban Debate League City Championship. We had some outstanding results. Shai Watkins and Mecca Mix from Robinsdale Middle School took first place as a team in the rookie division, an incredible accomplishment. In the novice division, Chloe Grant and Ally Tre from Fair School Crystal earned second place as a team, showing strong collaboration and critical thinking. We also had four students placed in the top 10 of the Rookie Division Individual Speakers Award with Violet Broich of Plymouth Middle School earning first place overall. These...yes, thank you. These results reflect our students' hard work, their confidence and ability to use their voices to advocate and articulate ideas, skills that will serve them well in the future. Congratulations to all who participated. Cooper High School recently had the honor of welcoming U.S. Congresswoman Omar for an engaging and inspiring Q and A session with students. Student leaders led the conversation, spending a full hour asking thoughtful and wide-ranging questions touching on policy, leadership, and Representative Omar's personal journey. Throughout the discussion, she encouraged students to stay engaged in their communities, to ask bold questions, and to believe in their own power and potential. Just wanted to give an update on Reimagine Ardell Vision 2030. Today, we've had 10,295 engagement touchpoints, putting us at about 20% of our overall goal of 50,000 people. Continue conversations and encourage folks to continue to attend. And finally, as we celebrate our students tonight through these accomplishments and the many staff who support them, I want to take a moment again to acknowledge the incredible human side of the $21 million budget deficit we face since 80% of our district expenditures are used to support our staff. While all reductions have impact, there are varying degrees of significance. Every staff member in this district matters, and they are doing incredible work on behalf of and in service to our students. Over the past few weeks, we've had to inform valued and dedicated employees. Some who have served our district for decades know that their position was being reduced or eliminated. I want to recognize how difficult this is, and I want to thank the staff who have been most impacted by these significant reductions.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the budget update, but before we start that, I have a couple... a couple of words I'd like to say. Last year, the board, the school board approved a $17.1 million in reductions, but sadly, $14 million of those reductions were never implemented. So that gap and the budget reductions for this coming year is how we got to the $21 million you've been hearing about. Thank you to Superintendent Stallow and CFO Hoheisel for the work you and your teams have been doing on this. I know that the last few months have been incredibly difficult for everyone, for students, families, teachers, staff, and administrators. First, wondering and worrying about budgets and programs, and then receiving official notice of non-renewals and reductions. As a board member, who was a former, is a former teacher, I know how this feels. I was a teacher who was put on unrequested leave due to budget cuts. I was also teaching when my colleagues were non-renewed. And as a principal, I delivered notices to beloved teachers that they would not be coming back. I want to acknowledge that what you've been through is a horrible, horrible experience. I also want to thank everyone who is trying to stay positive and focus on our students. As we regroup and reimagine our district, we will come out strong and right-sized. But right now, it hurts. Okay? Ready for the budget update? Thank you.
Thank you. Our outcomes for this evening, as we look at the budget update, is we want to provide, as we kick off this evening, we want to provide just a bit of a Minnesota school district finance reality. We also want to talk a little bit about where we are with school reductions, service model change. Then CFO Hoheisel is also going to help us understand the tiered transportation system, bell time alignment. We'll review the impact of changing bell times and discuss proposed bell times and walk zones to determine if adjustments should be made, starting in the 25, 26 school year. So as we move into the next session of our presentation, I want to share a short video that helps explain the broader picture of, the financial picture for Minnesota schools. I know it can be really confusing, because headlines are receiving, our headlines say that schools are receiving record funding, yet districts across the state, including Robinsdale, are making significant cuts. This video, which was created with the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, lays out some of these readings, these reasons. You'll hear about inflation, you'll hear about unfunded and underfunded mandates, the changing role of schools and some of the services that students need, and then a little bit about our funding being restricted in many categories. So as we watch this video, I want you to keep in mind that while we are significantly being impacted right now by these budget reductions, it really is a statewide funding challenge, and it requires attention about the local and the legislative level. So we'll go ahead and play this. It's about a three-minute video. After headlines across Minnesota declared...
I'm Terri Salo, and I'm proud to serve...
Nope, it's not that one. Y'all have seen that several times. I think Molly just getting that volume up, and you had it. ...across Minnesota declared record school funding in 2023. Why are so many school districts making budget cuts and going to voters for more funding? Here are the top reasons Minnesota schools are struggling to balance budgets. Number one, inflation. Families aren't the only ones feeling the impact of rising costs. For school districts, the costs of labor, health insurance, property insurance, and school bus transportation continue to rise. The 2023 inflationary increase to the general education formula is a step forward, but it doesn't make up for decades of underfunding and failing to keep up with rising inflationary costs. Number two, unfunded and underfunded mandates from the state. When it comes to some of the most costly things schools have to pay for, it's the state legislature, not the local school board, who makes these decisions. From implementing new instructional strategies, to increasing curricular requirements, to providing unemployment benefits, there are decisions made at the state level that local districts must follow. While the state may offer one-time funds to help pay for some new requirements, the ongoing costs are often the school district's responsibility. And number three, the changing role of schools in our communities. The needs of students are different than they were 10, 20, or 30-plus years ago. From mental health support for students, specialized learning assistants, family resources, and career programs to help meet workforce needs, schools have taken on additional responsibilities to meet the needs of their students and community. When you add rising safety needs, aging buildings, and technology, and declining birth rates, it's clear why Minnesota districts struggle to balance their budgets. School funding is complex. With the majority of funding coming through the state in the form of general education aid, schools also receive funds for specific categories that can only be spent on certain items. Additional needs are then covered by property taxes. In other words, just because the state is providing us with more dollars, doesn't mean we can use those dollars wherever we like. Each year, we tackle the challenge of balancing these funding sources with our increasing expenses to build an effective budget that meets student needs. When our student needs exceed state and local funding, we may seek additional support through a referendum. As you can see, there's more to the story beyond headlines of schools receiving record funding, inflation, unfunded mandates, and a changing role for schools. Funding schools is an investment in our students, community, and future. Please reach out to your elected officials and share your story, so they can help do their part to make sure our students and our schools are receiving the resources they need for success. Visit our website to learn more. Thank you. I thought it would just give a little more context for those viewing at home, or for those here just to see that picture. I think as the video shows, it's also important to know that school districts across the state are navigating kind of this perfect storm that we heard about with inflation, with unfunded mandates, and the rising student needs. Again, not unique to Robinsdale, it is definitely a statewide issue. You can see on the slide, this is a report from the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD, shows how widespread the problem is. The almost 50 districts who are part of AMSD, obviously mostly in the metro area, are projecting more than $280 million in shortfalls for the upcoming school year, even with the state's basic funding formula increasing by 2.74%, 2.74%. What's more concerning is that, under the governor's latest budget proposal, 23 districts will actually see their shortfalls grow. Why? It's because, while the formula increases, there are also reductions in special education transportation, changes to compensatory revenue, and adjustments to literacy funding that impact some districts harder than others. Just like Robinsdale, these districts are being forced to make incredibly difficult decisions to balance their budgets. Resources to fully fund schools is part of a larger structural challenge, and one that requires legislative action, not just local response. Executive Directors Williams and O'Hearn and I were at the Capitol for the AMSD MA Essay Day at the Capitol two weeks ago. Like many of our neighboring districts, also joined and to meet with our legislators to advocate on behalf of our schools and our students. Next year, it's my goal, that like many other districts did, we bring with us a team of school board members, parents, students, and community members, who will also take part in that legislative advocacy, speaking to our legislators on support of public schools. And the session isn't over. So there is still time to communicate with and contact our legislators. I'm going to hand it over to our CFO at this time. I talked a little bit about a broader context, and Kristin is going to bring us back to the local.
...appear to be off in slides. So, what I wanted to call your attention to, and unfortunately, it's not on this presentation, was the few slides that showed what the school board had done last year, what was approved. And it's been called mining the gap. So in May of 2024, the board actually approved $17.4 million in reductions. And of that $17.4 million in reductions, just over $11 million was supposed to come from, from the buildings, from the schools. And those were very difficult decisions last spring. I actually remember having a conversation during a work session in December, as it relates to budget, about how the school board, the members that were on the school board at the time, have kind of been living this in perpetuity for about a year and a half. And then as we move on to what the preliminary reductions target are, you can see the proposed area of reductions for ESC administration and other staff. We have moved from those, on from those into the school-based reductions and the transportation conversation. Now, we're going to talk about, like, the short-term plan that's being implemented. To date, how we're mining the gap, as you see in the slide, outlines the changes that we are proposing for this year. And you can see that the $15.7 million to the $17.7 million actually does not get us to the $21 million. We honestly don't know how we could get to the $21 million. So even with what is proposed, we're not going to achieve a balanced budget at this time. You heard with the presentation, statewide budget pressures with rising costs, underfunded mandates, we do have declining enrollment. And that is a component too with staff reductions, as far as Chair Evans Becker had mentioned, trying to right-size our, right-size our district. But we also have unique challenges. Last year, the planned, $14 million in planned budget cuts did not happen. And to be very clear, we often hear the question, where's the money? To answer that simply, it went into people. Paychecks. Because we did not eliminate positions we planned to, we ended up paying more than $11 million in staffing for an additional year. So looking ahead to fiscal year '26, we are proposing $15.7 to $17.7 million in reductions. This isn't a new plan. It's the board-approved plan from last May. And it reflects the realities that we're facing, both locally and across the state. I want to take a moment to share the comprehensive look at a very real and difficult decisions facing our schools. This means that principals and leaders are being forced to make incredibly hard choices about what they can sustain in the year ahead. In previous years, principals were able to fill key roles, teachers, media specialists, educational assistants, counselors, and more, at levels that are no longer possible under our current financial reality. As we discussed, the base and service staffing model with you January 6th, due to the budget deficit, principals received less full-time equivalent allocation this year than they have in years past. This will result in larger class sizes, staffing reduction, and service model changes. So some of the staff outside of the classroom that are being impacted are security EAs. They will remain in buildings. However, like in other areas, we have less full-time equivalents for these positions. And leaders will work to ensure safe learning environments. Counselors have not been cut from district, from the district level. However, principals were given less full-time equivalent allocation, and they determined, in collaboration with their staff members, the needs of the buildings. It is accurate that some principals simply did not have the full-time equivalent allocation to support maintaining counselors. It is also accurate that some principals chose other staffing priorities instead of counselors. Media specialists, due to decreased full-time equivalents, are impacted similarly at some of the secondary buildings. We currently have seven classrooms across all elementary schools that will leverage multi-age classrooms in support of budget realities and providing quality instruction. As part of this model, Sanasen will implement departmentalization, where one staff member focuses on teaching math, another on reading, another on science, and another on social studies, often integrating subject areas through literacy. This is one of several creative strategies being employed to maintain program integrity while operating with fewer staff. Class size ratios. This was a January board discussion, and class size ratios were not adjusted. However, class size ratios, when you look what we currently have as our, as what is being implemented, which is, depending on how you're looking at it to your left, so where kindergarten is 20.2, or first grade is 20.4, that's what's actually in play. Whereas next year, we're looking at moving those, again, still within the, within the board-approved ratio, up to the maximum of 25, or 26, or 28, and so on, depending on the grade level. These class size ratios are not out of alignment with our neighboring and comparable districts, including St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and Minneapolis. And we remain aligned to the metro area. Service model changes, health services being restructured, the number of nurses is being reduced, however, the same, there will be the same number of health professionals. Center-based classrooms, staff to the ratio in the teacher contract, which is also consistent with regular education classroom staffing. And then, when we're assessing locations for our center-based classrooms, this happens annually, we prioritize students remaining in their home building, staffing efficiencies and support, and analyze where we could receive administrative reductions. I will move on to the one area that I'm going to ask the board to vote on tonight, which is our walk zone changes and our bell time changes. What has been discussed at the last work session or two has been adjusting elementary school walk zones from .5 miles to .8. Middle school walk zones from .7 miles to 1 mile, and then high schools would remain the same. We did, we had sites that went out and did surveys to see what, what the flavor was for these changes. And if you look, an example, Forest Elementary, the elementary walk zone changes, the majority support the change, that is in blue, at 60, I can't read it, 66, 65, 66%? And then 34% say they do not support it. Now, I would like to point out that with walk zone changes at any level, we would not put kids in any sort of hazardous situation. We're not going, if there is a busy roadway, or some sort of, loss of words, any sort of situation that could potentially be dangerous for students, we're not going to do that. We're, we will adjust the transportation for their particular area without adjusting the walk zone. And then this is, I would say it's honestly somewhat misleading, but it was the, one of our middle schools who did the survey with Fair Crystal. It's, you know, how does the middle school feel about changing their walk zone from a .7 to a 1 mile? You say almost 50%, it doesn't even apply. 27% agree, and then 23% disagree. Before I move on, I would like to say about walk zone changes, we have received very little feedback as it relates. I mean, when we're talking about the proposed bell time changes, there's been significant feedback with survey data, but walk zones does not seem to rise to a level of, I would say, concern at this point. We just have not received a lot of feedback as it relates. When looking at proposed bell times, there's, there's a few moving pieces to this. I would like to call attention, for those, I get that it's a lot of numbers and verbiage on a slide. If you look at like, the aqua or the turquoise, those are the proposed, the gray columns, the aqua turquoise with the yellow... the Aqua turquoise with the yellow are the proposed, and then the gray columns with the green are what is in existence. Ultimately, the summary of this is, and this slide is specific to elementary schools, is most of our elementaries would be shifting five minutes earlier. So they would start five minutes earlier, they would end five minutes earlier. That would stay the same with C too, even though C is not in alignment with other elementary schools, they would still make a shift, it would just be at the times that they're looking at. The largest change for elementary schools would be to RSI. They would be switching from a 9:20 start time to a 7:40 start time. With that, its counterpart is Fair Crystal, that's the swap. To have our middle schools, which is the middle column, more of the periwinkle or lavender, where you see Plymouth Middle, Robbinsdale Middle, Sandberg, and Fair Crystal, this would adjust those times, so the middle schools could be in alignment for shared staffing and various reasons. Our high schools would actually start the day at the same time they're currently starting, but they would release 10 minutes earlier. We would be looking to move RTC to align more with our secondary schools. Right now, they're an earlier start. The intention is multifaceted in that we would get not only a reduction in costs, but we would also be able to do programming different for them and provide them maybe more of a workforce opportunity for the 18 to 21-year-olds. So that's what we would be looking at for them. And then middle school would start, back to the middle school, middle school would start five minutes later and still release at the same times. Response to the bell time changes in elementary, you can see the change for the five minutes earlier and then releasing five minutes earlier. 84% is in support of this. Again, it's Forest Elementary, but I would say any elementary school that doesn't, hasn't, is not, where a significant change is not proposed, didn't have a response that varied differently from this. When looking at RSI, it's a different result. You, when looking for, and you can see the number of responses, it's 374 responses, and I want to say that was from parents and students. Vast majority would like to keep the bell schedule as is, and that, when I say vast majority, it's 73.5. The orange represents changing the bell schedule at 17%, and then 9% is indifferent to the change. And again, RSI is the biggest change. They would be moving from the 9:20 to aligning with our other elementary schools. RSI staff, we did separate, there was a separate survey that went out for RSI staff, and I know the board had received feedback from various people that are involved with RSI. 29 responses. The majority, at 48%, said to change the bell schedule. 27.6% said to keep it, and then 24% were indifferent. C Elementary, one of the reasons why I put this up here is, the change for C is actually that they would be, their ridership would change. They would no longer be paired with other elementary-age students. They would be paired with Fair Crystal, which means you would be putting elementary-age students on the same bus as middle school students. And what was the feedback as it relates to that? You can see 32% supportive, just shy of 40% was neutral, and then you had 28% that would be concerned about mixing the age levels. And then Fair Crystal are the middle school, and keeping the current start time and the proposed, again, 278 responses, keeping the same start time was 65.8%. Various reasons for this, honestly, there's some students that didn't want to go as late as the other schools, the other middle schools, or didn't want to wake up, no, they would go, didn't want to sleep in. They were ready to start their day, and they didn't want to go as late as the other middle schools. Was some representation of the survey data. So when looking at the preliminary reductions as it relates to transportation, which is really the purpose, one of the purposes of looking at bell schedule changes, and certainly the walk zone changes, was how do we receive a potential savings? We've already discussed and moved forward with the Minneapolis transportation, and we anticipate getting about $264,000 in savings there. Bell times and walk zones, now I will say this for voting purposes, the vote can be separate from each other. You can do bell times as one, walk zones as another. It wasn't costed that way. That would be significant enough work for us to go out and break it out. I will say vast majority of the savings is going to come in bell times. It's not going to be in walk zones. We will see something, but it won't be a lot. And then the activity bus reductions, we had talked about at a work session, moving away from having two activity bus shuttles, if you will, at the end of the day to consolidate, in part because of ridership, to consolidate that down to one. There seems to be support at the high school level and throughout, and that would achieve about $27,000. So in total, $728,000 if everything that is proposed is approved. One of the items that was brought up at the work session was possibly moving to hubs, to transportation hubs, like researching, if we don't, if we can get kids to a particular site, I'm thinking more of the magnets, and then have hubs that bring them out, can we do that? We can do anything. Unfortunately, the cost of the hubs is very prohibitive. It would cost us about $870,000 to run hubs. So that is one reason that that was not proposed. And just for context, our transportation budget is just over about $18 million. So when watching the presentation that Dr. Salo showed, as far as M.A.S., and they talked about rising costs, you know, you have your utility, you have your transportation, whatever, we're not immune to that. We have, we run a lot of buses, given the design of our programming, and so this was just mainly trying to achieve reduction in that area. So that was a lot of me talking. I know Dr. Salo had...
Yeah, so this presentation wasn't the final one, so I just also wanted to, I know what Kristen just shared was really that short-term plan. We've been talking since November about this $21 million impact would have both a short-term plan, how do we reduce as much as possible of that $21 million, and then how do we also have a longer-term plan to ensure that we've got fiscal stability moving forward? So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, and most of you that have paid attention, have seen most of these slides before that aren't in this, but we'll make sure in the board book, we've got the most, the newest presentation there. As you've heard since November, the board has received regular updates outlining the short-term plan and progress in the mining the gap, and we'll be sure those slides get back up for you as well. We've been honoring the board's directive by implementing the already-approved reductions from last year while carefully studying our district to identify the most responsible path forward. This isn't a new conversation, it's a continuation of what was determined last year. We're following through, we're doing so in a thoughtful way with a strong commitment to honoring our people, our contracts, and our core values. That's part of what's taken some time in this process. It's not as simple as just copying and pasting everything that was on the list from last year. So while we've also focused on the short term, we've been really intentional in keeping our eye on the prize now, our current students, our current staff, the current work that we're doing, and building for a better and sustainable future. And that's where we imagine our Dail Vision 2030 comes in as part of our work. So as I mentioned earlier, we've had over 10,000 people be a part of that process. We're going to continue that work. We're starting just now to look at some of the themes and the data that's coming forward. We, even as we were thinking about this transportation piece, we went back to look at some of the survey data there as well. I just wanted to also say, I've heard a few concerns about us worrying more about the future than we do the now. And I want to be really clear on some of the things this year that we've worked on to ensure that we are working and helping our students right now. We've expanded Bridge to Read, we've implemented more deeply school improvement plans, we've advanced our strategic plan, we also passed a technology levy with the highest approval margin of any school district measure in Minnesota, and consistently elevate student and staff voices. So there's a lot that we're doing for the now. So in other words, this isn't just about cutting or reacting, it's about leading forward responsibly, thoughtfully, with our students at the center of every decision for now and for decades to come. With that, be happy to take questions.
We have like 15 minutes left for questions approximately, is that...
Four, yeah, 15.
Okay. Did I see a hand from Director Holmes? Okay.
You want to go one at a time?
Sure.
So we had some outstanding questions around the bell time changes from our last work session in terms of adventure club registration and coordination with families, pickup lines at RSI running into Saneson, and then staff that it takes to monitor those. Any feedback or answers to those?
I will turn to Anthony to answer the adventure club component.
Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Superintendent Salo, members of the board. When it comes to the adventure club registration component of it, and with the bell time changes, the biggest concern, I know there's a concern around the staffing, like our staffing, but our biggest concern is around the space, you know, and it is, RSI is one of our biggest sites, actually our biggest site, so we just have to work with the building administration around ensuring that we have the space to accommodate the needs of the families. Right now, we currently have a waiting list, so that's something we can work on though, but that would be the pieces, and it's not the staffing, it is the space that is our concern there, to serve as many families that may need the programming.
And just to follow up on that portion of it, you know, as a parent of an RSI student, I'm going to disclose that right now, my kid does not take a bus, we pick him up and drop him off, so this doesn't impact me personally. I did attend the last PTO assembly, general assembly, and I found out some interesting information. I was hearing concerns about the space, and in terms of if they register, they won't have enough, and then I guess an idea was thrown out, well, maybe we bus them to a different location then. And so there was a lot of unknowns for the families and uncertainty, and that's what's really concerning me right now. This was a big change, and you saw it in the response from the surveys from the families and the pushback, and I, as a board member, understand the impact and the logistic changes for staff, and see a lot of value there and a lot of things that align to make that decision. But what I'm concerned about and trying to weigh is decreasing student enrollment. And if we continue to lose families because they express some strong sentiments towards this, and if it's that big of a change, I would wonder if this is something we could push to next year, in particular RSI, so they can make accommodations, we can give a timely notice to families that are thinking about that, or if they have to make other arrangements. So those are my concerns there. Thank you for answering, and I know our adventure club is highly sought after, and the parents spoke wonderfully about it, but it just, there was a lot of angst over this and what it was going to do to them as individuals. So again, my concern there is that we're going to lose more enrollment. Thank you.
Okay. Other persons?
Chair Evans Becker, can I just ask again, because I was not here at the time? So bell time changes happened once before in this district, and I think it was relatively recently, I don't, last handful of years, where most of our elementary schools actually switched times from one of our secondary buildings. And I don't know the answer. What was the impact to the loss, did we have a significant loss of enrollment? Because to me, you know, and again, maybe it's different now or whatever, but if that was the trend, if that was what our data shows is that bell time changes did or did not cause an increase in different choice, would it do the same?
Can I just, so I, because they changed them before that tweak, and I was not on the board then, so I went back and watched the work they put into it. And my understanding, and perhaps Director Bassett, since she's been here, magnet schools, RSI in particular, has stayed that way. And when they did that first change, the magnet schools stayed. I cannot find a reason why either, other than I know there's a high participation rate from parents at our magnet schools, but it did not change when they did it prior to this recent one. So food for thought.
I believe it was because of busing Director Bassett and then Director Hillenbrand.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thanks for all your hard work on this.
Of course.
I still have some concerns about the transportation. I know that when we initially heard about the impact to Minneapolis, and one of the reasons I want to center on that, and I also have some thoughts and comments I'll make about the magnet school programs. But the sum total, and I don't know the exact number, but from Minneapolis, we get about, let's just call it 1,200 students that enroll into our district. And so, you know, the fact that, and initially when we had the work session and heard about this, what we heard is that it was going to be limited to a specific zip code, and the example given was that one of the children would be transported from Minneapolis out to Zachary Lane, which is a really big stretch. So I mean, that's the example that was given, and it certainly, I could see where that would be a concern. Now, I have since learned, I believe I've learned, because it's been in the middle of a work session when I heard different things, and what I think I understand now, and you can help me understand if that's true or not...
Sure.
Is that this is across Minneapolis, all zip codes would be affected, not just 55405, but all zip codes of students who are transferring into Robbinsdale would not, there's a transportation change. And they would be, and maybe, and I'll let you state exactly what that is again, so I don't mess it up, but the reality, and so I guess my question is, with the savings that we anticipate we might get, does that offset the revenue we might lose? Because it's no small thing, and we've heard some emails from parents who talk about the fact that transportation changes for those students who enroll in would be a particular hardship for a number of those families, and I don't think we sampled them like we've done, of course, our own students, and I didn't expect that. However, that's a phenomenon, because what I don't think people really understand is that the revenue that comes into this district, and we really studied that when we established C, without having a valve that allowed for open enrollment, we could not then continue to provide the array of services across this district that we do. Because you can't just move kids around, you can't just move our own students around. If we move our own students around and open a building, for example, we're paying all that more money for the same number of students, so the cost remains. So making sure that we have the number of students that we need, and they're not just students for the need of the money. However, being cognizant of that when you make those changes is very important. And so I wonder about the impact of those changes. And one of the things that made me kind of, you know, kind of understand it and kind of not press so hard on it initially is that Minneapolis, as I understand it, do not provide transportation for their high schools. I'm not sure what they do for their elementary and secondary, I haven't researched it. My attention is right on Robbinsdale, and there's enough to keep your attention right here. So I don't know what everybody else is doing, but I do know that. And so I wonder about that, and if we know the amount that we might lose, and have we sampled that to see how many students we might lose because they can't get here? So that's one question. I'm not really looking for you to answer it right now unless you're prepared.
I'm completely prepared to answer that question.
Oh, well, good, you know, and I have another one, I want to kind of get, but I'll hold it. That's an important question, but tied to that then is the magnet school question.
Let's do one at a time. And didn't we already decide, didn't the board already make its decision about the Minneapolis routes?
We did.
Thank you.
Whether they did or not, I mean...
She has an answer.
She has an answer.
But Director Evans Becker, this is for the public as much as it is for us, and we've talked about a number of things, and so we're getting some recap from our administration, which is very appropriate. We may get recap or questions from directors as well, which is just as appropriate. So I just think it's important to say that so we're not second guessing each other about the questions we're asking. I assume good intent. If somebody's asking a question, I assume they have a good reason to do so. And so I think that that's the standard we want to try to keep too.
I just wanted to be clear so people knew that we already had made this decision. Your answers, please, Director.
Yes, thank you. And I understand that I live in this every day, and when information is presented, especially when there's gaps in presentation, meaning every other week, that sometimes information gets lost or forgotten. So I'm more than happy to provide a recap of what we discussed.
Right. We haven't really, we have, the board hasn't taken any action on those things. The administrative decisions that the administration can make, they have made.
That is correct.
So I think that should be, that's a distinction that I think is important to make.
It's a, yes, that is the distinction. It will not be what happens with bell times and walk zones tonight. You will be asked to vote, but as it relates to the open enrollment transportation to Minneapolis was discussed. It was presented. I believe there were five zip codes that were presented to or spoken to, the impact of each, the potential impact, the number of students that were transported out of those zip codes. 55405 in particular impacted 20 students in today's number of students, and so that is why that zone transportation was saying we're just not going to transport out of 55405 anymore. The other four area codes, we had discussed and looked at the different buildings they would go to, which would be consistent with how we do transportation internally. You get transportation to the most local school, depending on the grade level, and that's what you receive. I will also say that there is another factor that weighs in in open enrollment transportation beyond Minneapolis is all of the other schools. We do have Oseo, we do have Hopkins, we do have students from outside of the district that aren't Minneapolis that are making decisions, and they don't have a transportation choice. We don't move them at all. When looking at the budget impact, what I will say is this, true, the cost savings is represented. When we looked at staffing and maybe as the 182 licensed staff members rolled out, there was an impact. We assumed, and it was discussed in December and certainly discussed with administration multiple times, the assumption was is that we would lose. We started out initially with an assumption of half of the open enrollment students that we were transporting. And so therefore, your class sizes or the number of students per grade level decrease, because we were going to assume if there is 100 students that were busing from Minneapolis, 50 of them won't come back.
Good assumption.
At that time, principals went out and pounded the pavement and reached out to their families and said, what are your plans? Because quite honestly, their building level staffing depended on it, and they did the work. They did the hard work. We believe we have, as best you can, relatively decent information on the students that intend to return and the students that do not. Now, there are, we do have the undecideds, and that's part of it. But to the revenue reduction, fair, fair enough. But we've also made a staffing reduction to show that. And if those families that we assumed were going to lose because of the transportation decision come back, we add staff back. I mean, great. I would say we have adjusted our staffing to support the loss of what we could have for transportation.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that answer, and I'll hold my other question, which is also about transportation and the hubs. So I think there's others who want to.
Thank you. Director Helen Brand.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you, well, for the whole presentation, but thank you for giving that survey information too, because, you know, it's hard to know how representative some of the information is that you're getting, and so that was really helpful to see that it's more, to get a more representative sample. I know it's not all the families responded into a quick survey, but it's certainly helpful to get a broader scope of people's feelings, so that, I really appreciate that, being part of that. And then I just wanted to say that, in answer to the bell times, when they switch to make high school earlier, right, because that's better for the kids, then mostly the elementaries then went later, and the, sorry, magnets.
Elementarys went early.
Yeah, I'm sorry, elementarys went earlier, right, because middle school's the latest. Anyway, the magnets stayed the same. That was because of the staffing, the transportation patterns at the time. Just to answer that, I know that as a parent who, you know, it was impacting my kids, right? So I paid quite a bit of attention to that.
One thing that I would like to, and this is literally came at 5 o'clock, that I would like to address to, and you had mentioned, you know, the representation of the survey data. When looking at the big Reimagine Ardell survey that exists out there, we do have, and were able to pull quickly, when looking at everyone, and when I say everyone, this would be students, staff, and parents, and there was 2,853 respondents to this particular area, and it was, as we're looking to make budget adjustments, what cost-saving measures should we take into consideration? So actually, this says 2,853, but I seem to remember 4,444 was a different response. Nonetheless, we have a few thousand people responding, and the number one was adjust transportation routes, times, and zones, and that was at 21.72 percent. Supported that as the number one potential for a budget adjustment as it relates to the survey that is still out live in our community.
And then just quickly to walk zones, I just want to say, I know that that's not as big of an issue, but I think it's great. I think that our kids need to be moving more. My kids personally choose to walk to and from school even though they have a bus available. And I think, you know, as we were talking about the Robin break, it's a really important thing for kids to be moving, and so I think it's a great change that will help support the district.
Director Long, thank you. Director Long?
I was just wondering, last time during the work session, we talked about possibly reaching back out to some of the RSI families. We'd gotten several emails from them. It seemed to be very concern, a very big concern to them with this drastic change. Was what happened with that?
I would say the survey data is representative of, and I can go back to that, is representative of what we received, not only from RSI students and families, and you can see their vote, if you will, on keeping the bell schedule, changing is in the orange, and then they're indifferent. That was students and families, and there was 374 responses to that survey, and then staff at 29 responses and their opinion with changing the bell schedule at 48 percent, keeping the schedule 27.6, and then indifferent at 24.1.
So there wasn't any discussion then about a possible happy medium with them or other options?
Well, I mean, I don't, we did, back to Director Bassett's question about what are our other options? What can we do? And the hubs, I mean, that was, costed that out again, just to make sure that that was the $870,000 for the hubs. As far as meeting in the middle, I don't know how you do that, because to meet in the middle would indicate what part of the time, and then it means more buses. The system that we have designed is the most efficient for the way our district is set up right now, as far as what is proposed. If the board chooses not to move in that direction, then the times will stay as they are. Again, we can adjust walk zones, and then we just don't see that savings. I don't know what a happy medium would be with it being a magnet school. It has to fall into one category or the other.
Thank you. Director Bassett, did you have a follow-up or?
Well, I do have a question, but I know a couple, at least one director hasn't, doesn't have a question, so if she doesn't, then I will. And so the hub, you know, and actually, you know, I guess I would like to see the calculations around that, because I recall when we did it before, because actually I referenced it, because it's a strategy that we had used in the district before, and that is to have transfer buses for some of the magnet schools. Now, is it reasonable to have it for 100% of them, of our magnets, the several that we have, or not? I don't know. But what I will say is that at the time that we actually, you know, had some discussions about it, we actually hired a firm to actually help us figure out how to pull together the transportation array. Now, when we talked about it, I mentioned it in passing at an earlier work session and mentioned it again at our March 17 meeting. So kudos to you if you're able to pull all of it together in two weeks, where it took us some consultants a couple of months to figure it out. So, and I say that, you know, to really acknowledge the work you put in and looking at that, but I am interested, because I want to know, how did we do it before, and we can't do it now, and is it cost prohibitive? That's really valuable information to have, and I guess what this points up to me, because as I look through this, I have a number of different questions, and this is, I don't feel like the appropriate forum to necessarily go into, you know, quite frankly, but I think this goes to the importance of having an ongoing conversation and dialogue, and I know we're on a fast track. You know, we've got to make some decisions fairly soon, so I know that you're under some time constraints. I realize that. But I do think that more involvement from this board in some of those questions, because for example, I don't know, and we talk about that we're going to have certain buildings or things, I've got notes everywhere, which buildings are they? Which ones are going to, where are we going to have mixed classes? Because in the past, mixing ages in classrooms was an issue that we got a lot of pushback. Some years ago, it's different people, new people, but I'm saying there's some proposed service model changes that are coming to us, and we're just hearing about them. Hearing about something that's already happened makes it very difficult to even talk about it with the administration, because nobody wants to be negative. I'm not interested in that, but the questions that I have, I would be able to ask those in a more timely fashion. And I think that that's important, because we've had a lot of, people have been paying a lot of attention to this district for a range of reasons. Asking questions is a board director's job. That's what the public elects us to do. And if we don't understand something, it's not for me to say, well, Director Helen Brand, why don't you understand that? That's not my, that's not for me to do. It's for her to determine what she needs to know. And I just feel like this PACE has really been kind of an enemy of that, of superintendent, and I recognize the role the PACE has had. But I do think that there are some outstanding questions, and I've got pages of them, I've got a ton of notes, but I don't want to belabor this any more than it needs to be, but I think, so I'm just reducing it to making the comments that I'm making.
Director Holmes?
I guess my comment will add on to what Director Bassett just said, because it relates to the service model, the base service model we've been speaking about since January. And since Cut Day happened, obviously, we've heard a lot of feedback, and I think one email that came, maybe it was this morning, where it was asked that we pause on the service model, and I think I'm ready for that as well, and we need another work session where these questions can come out. And I thought we were going to have one. We talked about having an additional work session where we could have free, fluid discussion, and I think the two of you are looking at calendars, I don't know if it hasn't lined up, but it is. It's a change of service model, and for people who aren't ready to have second and third graders blended together, and we just say we're doing it, that does run the risk of decreasing our enrollment or families choosing elsewhere, because they can. And it's the same thing when I go to a PTO meeting and hear that our base model, you know, they're getting zero for the MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support, and that helps students with their behavior. Those are critical people that help students regulate emotions, you know, de-escalation, all of those things, so we can keep our students in class and learning, and without those, it changes. And so when we're looking at increased classrooms, no counselors, you know, lack of a MTSS position, I have really, really grave concerns that we're not supporting our students the way we've agreed to do in terms of mental health support, behavior, all of these add up. And the reason why I link this to another work session is because we keep doing this piecemeal, and I know I've said that to you, and you respond with the PACE, and we have to make these discussions. We have to make the decision on the budget by the end of June. Before then, we have time to talk and discuss, and the board has expressed interest to be brought into this, and rough plans, look at where you're considering, and I'm going to reiterate that ask, because I don't necessarily agree with increasing salaries for cabinet, you know, bringing us to market rates when we can't even provide core staff at our schools. So that should be a discussion, and I did send that to the chair in terms of, we have an assistant superintendent position posted above our posted contract right now. So I just have concerns, and I'm sure this is going to be alarming or, you know, tagged on the media as something, but we need a session as a board, and probably two or three, so we can do as much as we are able with the limited circumstances we're up against right now. I'm just, I'm not comfortable running schools next year with what I'm hearing, and these aren't rumors. I mean, we are splitting classrooms and.
Correct. As I had stated in the presentation, we currently have seven classrooms in all of our elementary school, in totality, seven, that are looking at a multi-age situation. I also said that wasn't a component of the presentation, but after the fact that we have made adjustments to our staffing based on what we believe the greatest impact of potentially losing open enrollment would do. So it is possible that seven classrooms that are impacted could get up to a point where they're no longer, so seven could go to four. Now you're talking four classes, and again, I get it's not the service model, I'm just saying, just to provide a framework for what you're looking at as if we're moving into a budget conversation. The other component that I would like to address is the 11.115 million that the board, I'm presuming, talked about all late winter, early spring of last year, and ultimately moved forward with reductions in May of '24. Of that 11.1 million, you had 50.35 FTE in licensed staff, which included counselors, classroom teachers, and media. And so what is confusing to me coming in, and then when looking at EAs at 47.83, when looking at EAs, that was getting rid, or adjusting security and added hours that EAs were getting. What's challenging, and I'm going to only speak for myself, coming in new, and I'm looking at something that was already board-approved, I don't understand why, like, and I'm not, I appreciate your position, I'm not saying your position is wrong, and of course, I'm happy to move forward with the will of the board. What's confusing coming in is if this was already done a year ago. And maybe this was the discussion a year ago, and that's just where you landed? I don't know. But that's where my confusion comes in.
Can I just read?
Sure.
She was posing that.
Off of my comment. So clearly, there were issues with leadership last year. We're in a problem because of numerous things. There was lengthy conversations that went on. I think the difference for me is trying to do this right. If you're coming on and saying, I'm the CFO, that, you know, I don't mess with numbers, I don't like Lucy Goosey, that's one of the favorite things that you said here, actuals, and Dr. Salo's coming in saying, the buck stops here with me. What I did is I went back and looked since 2018 and how often this budget was approved. Seven zero, seven zero, seven zero. I have yet to approve a budget since I've been on here, and it's because we need to do things differently. We need to partner with you, so this is collaboration. And I think if you're new and you're saying you're not privy to conversations, you said yourself, we lived and breathed this for a long time.
You did.
So I think there are pieces that we could bring to you that we know from the community, instead of redoing surveys and bringing in consultants and doing things again. I don't want to hear consultant out of anybody's mouth right now at all. And so I think it's about really, truly partnering with you. If you're putting yourself on the line and saying, we're going to do this. If you're putting yourself on the line and saying, we're going to do this, that means working in collaboration with this board where we can help identify things and it shows a unified front moving forward because we are in a leadership role and there are expectations from the community for this board and they want us to do our job. So that's my goal. And so we're not having this conversation at a business meeting, but rather, rather a work session. And that's what I have expected. It's always been what I've expected and I think you'll do it. We've had bits of it, but not in totality, not roughing it out with the board who ultimately has to pass this budget. And I want to be really, really aware and intricately involved with it so I can speak, yes, we are losing resources, but this is why we're going to do something. And it's not enough for me to say, well, we'll get to the adventure club plan. When we're making those decisions, I want to make sure we're servicing our families because it is hurtful and it's impacting a lot of people and it's not, it's no longer good enough for me to say, oh, we'll get to it, we'll make a plan because I've been down that path and I don't want to do it again.
I think it was, somebody over there had their hand up too.
I did, yeah.
I can remember who.
Director Long.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, how do we make sure that administrative costs aren't detracting or taking away from our classroom supports? I know several slides that we saw in other presentations talked about how administration increased as enrollment went down. And I know that it was used that, well, we added schools as the reason for some of that happening, but, you know, the students are the most important part of what we do here. And so how, how are we making sure that our administrative costs are not affecting their education or what they're supposed to be getting out of their experience here in Robbinsdale?
I'm a little confused by the question because it sounds to me, or at least I'm viewing it as administrators aren't a part of student success. So I want to be really careful that that isn't when we had three administrators up here tonight talking about what they put in place.
Over administrators, I'm using it broadly, not just...
Not just building, okay. So thanks for that clarification. I think at the, two weeks ago, I don't even remember, a former, a previous presentation, we did show the amount of administrative, district office administrative reductions. And again, for those of you that didn't hear this, I want to be really clear that over the last two years, because the district office was a place last year that there was significant dollars actualized in the reduction. So we were operating this building with fewer administrators and staff and then we added to that again this year. So over the course of those two years, that's a 30% reduction of staff, not just administrators, that's the whole staff. So I, I don't have that breakout, Director Long. In terms of the building staff, again, you know, we've seen some reduction and that really is going to be a place where part of when we close buildings, that will be an administrative reduction because as we are operating the buildings, and that's when in those charts that we saw between 2014 and 2025 in the increase, that was when we did have, I think, three additional buildings were opened. So I'm not sure that I'm addressing your question specifically. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I, I, there has been realization of administrators, especially at the district office more so, but some also at the building level. I think three assistant principals?
I think that's what we discussed today.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up question to that?
Okay. A follow-up?
Yeah. So, is there any way that we could know what administrators by state statute we really need to keep here at the district office?
I think the only two that you actually need, if I'm correct, and please, if I'm wrong, let me know, it's me and I think it's the Director of Student Services. Oh, and I guess it is also community. I, I guess, I guess they're all now coming forward with that.
Don't forget me, don't forget me.
I know for a fact that it'd be incredibly difficult to run a, a school district of 10,263 students with those three administrators.
Director Bassett.
Thank you. So, kind of a different way of this question that Director Long posed, as you know, Superintendent, you and I spoke about that because the chart that we got the last time, because I believe I asked for that A chart, similar to that, if not that chart, the comparison between 2014 that you actually pulled together and where we are right now, and it provided information about a number of categories. The category that was missing, and you and I spoke about this the other day, was TOSSes. Because, and then what we were, what was said was, there's teachers on special assignment. And so the, the delta between what it was in 2014, I don't have that slide right in front of me, but it was something like 35. And then the number has gone up to, it was shocking. Do you know what that is offhand, what that number went to? Of the number, in that chart?
I'm, I'm turning it over to HR.
Oh, well, I can see her over there, behind that podium. Well, but, but, and the, and the reality is that this, this, the question or the comment about we've added buildings, what I asked for is, let's go back to when we had those buildings and how many TOSSes we had then. Because the true comparison is how many TOSSes we had at the time that we had all those buildings before we closed them. Maybe a midpoint that looks at some of the others, some of the other information that you think is appropriate. And then where we are now in terms of how many TOSSes. And if I remember what that number was and, and the Director O'Horn's over there, maybe she can tell us that ex, how many?
Eighty-five.
I sent that, I sent that in an email. You're right, it wasn't on the chart, but I think I sent it in an email to the board last Friday.
Okay. So I'm saying to you right now, this piecemeal information is difficult to keep track of. And if we have a chart that had all of the information on it, having that plotted on the chart is really what I asked for. Because then you can look in apples to apples and oranges to oranges, but 35 then going to 85 and the justification for that is, is pretty much kind of around the same question Director Long is asking in a different way. So I think what you're hearing here from me, now I don't need anybody to interpret what I'm saying because I'm talking. What we talked about last year, before your arrival, and it was pretty common across the dis, across directors, was we wanted to try to keep cuts away from the classroom. And one of the places that we wanted more information about was teachers on special assignments because of course, hopefully, those teachers could then go back into the classroom and wouldn't lose a job, they could go back to the classroom. This might, maybe naive thinking, but that's what I was thinking. And so when we didn't get that data, because initially, we, you know, we've gotten some of the piecemeal, but that is a concern. Because I do think that that's a place that we perhaps could save. I appreciate the comments I got from one of our principals who really talked in detail about how they're being used and I think I said, well, can we know more about how they are being used? So, I'm not necessarily looking for the answer to that at this moment. I am saying that the sentiments that I had then, and I think I heard from other directors, has not gone away. You know, and so that's my concern and, and I don't feel like I have a handle on the trajectory of that growth in teachers on special assignment. And when I hear that we three, we lost three positions in the ESC, you know, I mean, why not 10? Why not 15? And I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm not, not, you know...
Director, can you explain that?
Well, I'm just saying, why not more? I'll just put it like that.
I don't, I don't even know if there's more than three positions that...
I think there are 11, maybe.
Well, whatever the number is, I'm just saying, we didn't, we didn't get a presentation to talk about the questions that were asked. And so I, I think, I'm, I'm sure that my frustration is coming through because, I'm sure it is because I am, you know, and I'm not, I'm not apologizing for that. I'm very concerned as, as everybody is. I'm not saying I'm alone or I'm the only one. I'm not saying that at all. But I'm saying that there have been some questions that were posed and the information has been choppy. I mean, that's not a put-down. I'm just saying it's been very piecemeal, as you know, because you've been working, you've been flying the plane and building the plane at the same time. So we all get that. But what happens when people fly the plane and build the plane at the same time is that everybody's not always on the same page. I mean, it's just a reality. So I don't need any criticism about what we heard or what somebody else heard. I'm talking about what I heard and what my questions were. And so if you have specific questions, any other director for Ms. Hoheizel about something you wonder about, have at it. You know, my questions have been asked, so.
Superintendent Salo.
I just want to, I just, and I, I want to just be really clear with a couple of things, especially with that TOSA conversation. And we can certainly, you know, dig more into that data, Director Bassett, that's not a problem. I just also want to remind you, as we said in, in multiple times in the presentation, that our, our principals, at the end of the day, we have $21 million that we need to reduce. We have 80% of our budget, that's people. So there are going to be positions that are reduced. It's interesting to me that the media is so interested in this, like, that's a big surprise that we're going to have to reduce staff. We are reducing staff across every position. Our principals are allocated FTE and they have to, and they, they have, believe in shared leadership, so they work with their staff in order to make sure they're making the best decisions possible for their building. So there are cases where our principals, because of the value that we've already heard tonight about some of our teachers on special assignment, they're saying, we could use that FTE and buy down and have smaller class sizes, but because of our school improvement plan, because of the work that we're doing, because of the supports that our kids need, it's more important that we have a teacher on special assignment doing X role. And, and that's up to the principals. They get the allocation and they get to make some of those decisions. It was the same way with some of them who did have allocation. Some simply did not have the allocation for counselors and some of those positions. Some chose things other than that. So I, I just want to be sure that the public understands, the board understands that we trust our building principals with their staff to make decisions about what is most needed to move their school improvement plan and student achievement forward and in cases that is teachers on special assignment.
Superintendent, just a follow-up, just a follow-up to that, to that point she just made.
If it's quick.
Oh, yeah, sure, just one. And so, make sure I understand. So Superintendent, I guess I was thinking about some of the specialists that are at ESC that aren't really under the purview of, that's what I've been thinking about, because it's my understanding that building leaders can use some of their commensary aid to buy down a TOSA, do whatever else they choose to do. So, but we also have many of the TOSSes who are based at the Education Service Center. So...
Eleven. Eleven.
We only had, we only had eleven?
Eleven this year and we are reducing five of those, so there will be, there will be six. And these are, these are teachers on special assignment who lead our English learner program. They lead our literacy work across the district as we're implementing the READ Act, which is incredibly heavy lifting. They support our fine arts, all of our curriculum areas. They help support all of our buildings with their school improvement planning. So, while their offices are housed? At the district office, you're exactly right. It really is district-wide work and working specifically with buildings in many of those areas, sitting on, building instructional leadership teams. They do amazing work and our amazing staff members in support of students.
Thank you, Phil.
Director Bowman.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've heard, over these last couple of weeks, I've heard a lot of things that sort of sound like allegations, piecemeal, that was, that's a word that's being used here tonight. Let's do the right thing. All the things that we as elected official embrace. There's nobody up here that at all is separate from the belief that as an elected official, we want to do the right thing for the students of our district and the people in our community, no matter how we've defined that community. The other things, there's a lot of things that come to my mind tonight as I listen to this. And I, I'm going to try to be, be brief, I will be brief, but I, I really believe that doing the right thing involves for me, supporting our superintendent and supporting our CFO. Because we have lacked in leadership in this district for a number of years. It's not even worth talking about it at this point. We know where those gaps are. But what we have is we have some incredible expertise that dug in, didn't know anybody even here. I cannot imagine walking into a job, I mean, there are some four-letter words that we've sort of heard bantered in the background of what kind of a show it was when we hired these two. And my greatest concern from all of this is in the past two years, this is a board that has done a lot of fighting. The questions are really good from board members. That is the role of the board, to ask really, really good questions. But what I'm really concerned about is the sense that when we get the answer back from the administrators that we, we know have the expertise, somehow those answers are never good enough. They're just never good enough. And the reality of it is, is what we're going through right now is not good enough for our students or this community or this district. It is a terrible thing that we are in this spot. And I know for myself personally, I put myself on the line when I say, I support our superintendent and I support our CFO because I've not seen a better plan than what these two have put out with so little time over the last couple of months. It is concrete. Guess what? I can see the dots being connected. That is not something I have seen in this district over the past four years. It is my concern of, of the lack of expertise from board members. We all bring something to this table, but none of us have the education of the people who are making the recommendations to us at this time. And one of the things that I'm going to ask of this board at this point, because it's been said, we can't cut our way out of this. This is going to be cuts and cuts and cuts and cuts for the next couple of years. This is not going away once we put our signature on this budget. And the reality of it is, is are we going to cut by, are we going to fix our budget through a thousand cuts that are talked into the ground up at this table? Or are we going to let the people who we hired to do their job, make their recommendations from the heart and soul that I have seen from these people so that we can pick up whatever stinking little pieces we got left and start to move forward? Because we're not going anywhere by bringing back and bringing back, I'm sitting at this table, listening to reports that was done four years ago, six years ago, and they're all out of context. They're not based in the reality of what we've discussed and what have, I haven't been at the meetings, but what have been the content and context of what goes on in those meetings. And I know I sound probably a little more passionate than I want to sound, but this has been weeks and months of this. We owe it to ourselves to bring in a budget by the second meeting of June because I'm going on my first vacation for the last two weeks of June because I also caretake my sick husband. So I'm, I'm going to go away knowing that this board took the expertise that we have hired and guess what? We listened to it. What a radical thought for this district. Listen to the expertise. Oh my God, what will we do? But at this point, I'm going to put my money, my passion behind this superintendent and behind our CFO. Because in living here for a full lifetime, serving 25 years ago, when the first time I served, I have never seen such conciseness of numbers. I've never seen people pull together the reality out of nothing. So with that, I would recommend that the board do the right thing, that the board support our administration, that the board stop this nonsense of trying to balance the budget through a thousand cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the last person speaking or questioning is going to be Director Holmes.
Mm-hmm. I'm glad you have the information you need to support these decisions, but some of us do not. And I heard those sentiments, actually, when I went back and watched the approvals of the budget and you had said those similar things last year when we approved the budget. For me, it's changing practices, so we're not in the same hole again. And as we're going through this and you're talking about the comp dollars and the principals making the decisions, I know it's a learning experience right now for some of them in terms of Title I dollars... terms of Title I dollars and all of that, and it's been a work in progress in terms of who gets what and how it's allocated. But with that, I guess I would like more information then on if they're making such large decisions, and perhaps this is what Director Long was going after, when they're deciding on an AP over more EAs or whatever scenario comes up. What is the accountability factor there to make sure that our students' academic achievement needs are being met? How are we translating that into real results? Because I know they're doing the hard work and working with limited dollars this year, but how are we tracking that those decisions are the right decisions each year, because we weren't doing it before? And I know you're saying, "You're here and the buck stops here," but I would just like a little bit more information on how we're gonna track that, how it's working for those schools, because it's varying from school to school. So what does that accountability factor look like? How do we know when to change again? How do we know if that decision wasn't the right one?
Yeah, I'm absolutely not entirely ready to answer. That's a huge question.
Yes, it is.
And...
Agreed.
And, you know, I think the, the truth of the matter, and y'all have heard me say this multiple times, and the community has heard me say this multiple times, we are not performing where we need to be performing as a district in any level. So one of the things that I've paid deep attention to is our systems. And looking at, you know, we, like many districts, have random acts of excellence all over the place. And I'm very interested in having consistency with those systems to have excellence across the district. That's what we're building toward. And we do that through common ways of looking at school improvement plans. I was in a meeting today where we looked at, let's, let's make sure that we're even having the same metrics in those. So to your point, we're comparing apples to apples. The decisions that principals are making right now with staffing, I, I don't know that there's a correlative study that I can speak to. I can't right now. But I think the accountability piece is exactly that. How are they getting it done and how aren't they getting it done? And I can assess that in eight months.
No more.
But I'll continue to work on assessing that. I, I think that there have been areas that we influence and can help make decisions on, for sure, in terms of staffing. I am not in a position where if a principal says, because of the work that they've been doing over the course of the last five years, it's more important to student outcomes to have a teacher on special assignment who serves as a literacy coach than it is to have a lower number of students in the classroom, I'm gonna trust that administrator on that. Then the accountability, I think, Director Holmes, comes as we look at end-of-the-year progress, as we look at goals being met or not. Our administrators also learn a lot when they don't meet goals, right? Where, where do different strategies have to be employed or different resources put in place? So I'm not really answering your question entirely, but I will get to a better answer to that. Because you're right, how we staff buildings also talks about what we value and what we know works best.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will continue to talk budget at work sessions. So I think all the points have been made by the board. Thank you very much for your time and for answering our questions and your patience and your work on this. Next item on is, we're moving on to item seven, operations. Letter A is an action on the bell times and walk zones. You've seen the bell times and the walk zones information. Director Holmes?
Can we split the vote on the...
Certainly.
Please.
They said that we could do that. So is there a motion on the bell, on, let's do bell times and then walk zones? Is there a motion to approve the proposed bell times?
I'll move approval.
Oy.
You're...
Okay. Director Bowman moved it, and Director Hellenbrand seconded it?
Sure.
Okay. I'm gonna go for a roll call vote on this one. I don't see any hands up. And we...
Right.
This is bell times. Okay, so...
And I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is there any appetite to postpone this until next year? I, I see the merits in it, and I can support it, and I see how it aligns. This isn't a failure to make a decision. I just wanna be courteous to the families and the large amount of numbers that we did get back. We asked for feedback. It was not favorable from a family perspective. I don't even know if that's doable at this point. I know we're in the 15, but we've talked about 21. We're not hitting 21. Can we be... And I, I would ask, I could do that as amendment for even doing it the following school year, if administrators are welcome for that. I just am very concerned about losing additional enrollment.
Okay. What I would suggest is that we vote on the motion, and if the motion doesn't happen to pass, then we could have an alternative motion. Okay? All right, no more hands are up. Oh, we have another one. Yes, Director Hellenbrand?
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, as I'm thinking about it, I just wanna be, you know, I think the number's around half a million dollars for the walk zones and bell times together, right? So, and I think of that as how many teachers that would preserve. So I just wanted to say that I support it because that preserves positions, and so I just wanna put that out there, why I'm voting that way.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so Director Bowman, could you please call the roll for this vote? We are voting on the recommended changes to bell times.
Great, thank you, Director Bassett.
I'll vote yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu-to?
Yes.
Five yes, four, whoops, that'd be too many. Five yes, two no, the motion, the motion carries to change the bell times. Okay, we're, now we're up to walk zones. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve the proposed walk zones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bowman, seconded by Holmes. I don't see any hands up. I see a hand, Director Bassett.
Well, one of the things that I wondered about, I just didn't ask CFO about it, was that I am wondering about the smaller children with the larger walk zone, and since we didn't adjust to high school, my wondering was, why could, could we make that up if we increase the high school walk zone, 'cause they're bigger and more able to...
We have order.
And more able to do that. And I just...
It's not a like-for-like as far as what would be a financial savings.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It isn't a like-for-like. It's not like, well, we'll just switch the area and therefore we will receive the same amount of savings. We transport more elementary students than we do high school students. High school students have a way of getting, getting to, they drive, right? Or parents drop them off. There's also, if you look, and I'm thinking of our two high schools back to, you have multiple elementary schools, you have two high schools. What's, and by law, you can't go more than two miles from a high school. So what is our radius around Armstrong or Cooper or Highview versus what is the radius around the multiple elementary schools? And so it's not a like-for-like answer.
And I believe in the 1900s, the late 1900s, like the 1990s, this is what the walk zones were. Okay, I don't see any other hands, and so I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll so that we can vote on the proposed walk zone change.
Director Bassett?
It'll pass.
Pardon?
Yes, I'm voting yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Director Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu-to?
Yes.
It's unanimous. The motion carries to, to approve the walk zones that were recommended. Okay, next up is resolution, it's proposing, it's for the proposal for terminating the probationary teachers. This is required by law. That's why it's a resolution, not a motion. This, will someone move the resolution, please?
I'll move the resolution.
Are you waiving the reading?
Yes, please.
Okay, the resolution has been moved to terminate our, the probationary teachers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Bassett, moved by Bowman. Okay, I see no hands. Board directors had an opportunity, had an opportunity, and will still have an opportunity to see all these names. Okay, Director Bowman, will you call, do the roll call vote for...
I will.
The resolution terminating our probationary teachers?
With the suspended reading.
Correct. Thank you.
Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Director, I mean, Chair Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu-to?
Yes.
Six yes, one no. The, the resolution carries. Okay. Item C, it's an action item to accept the resignation of the Financial Advisory Council member, Yuki Doja. He was appointed by the board, and so we need to accept his resignation from the FAC.
I'll move approval.
Director Bassett moves to accept?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Hellenbrand. Director Holmes?
Will we be discussing filling the vacancies?
I believe it's coming up at our work session.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll wait.
All right, and this is a voice vote. So all in favor of accepting his resignation, resignation of Yuki Doja from the FAC, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Moving right along. Okay, so what happened at the January 6 business meeting is, we approved a particular amount of money, $12,500, but it ended up in the minutes, $12,000. So we just have to have a, a motion to amend our minutes that were published. I mean, we're just, we're just correcting the minutes.
I'll move approval.
We approved the right amount, but we have to have it in the minutes, right? It's been moved by Director Bowman, seconded by...
I'll second.
Director Holmes. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, so the minutes will be corrected for that one. And the other one is amending the minutes of the February 18 business meeting. Okay, so at that meeting, that's the meeting where we used a resolution to appoint Dr. Wu-to to the board. However, in the minutes, it says we had a motion. What happened was, there was a motion on our, and our council said it needs to be the resolution in order to meet state statute. So it was changed by the mover and the seconder and voted on that way, but it didn't get recorded that way in our minutes. Therefore, we need to just change the minutes. We don't have to change anything. We actually did, it's just changing the minutes. So is there a move to change, to correct those minutes?
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
It, it appears, item 7E should have been a roll call, and this should also be a roll call on the agenda. So the amendment changes should be roll call votes? That's what I have set up in my...
Oh, I thought, oh, where did I see? I saw a voice vote somewhere, but I am definitely wrong. Okay, let's finish off this one, and then we can go back to the other one and do it, okay?
So we're gonna be on 7E right now?
So we are on the minutes for the eight, February 18 meeting. Do I have a motion to correct those minutes, amend those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Holmes and Bassett. And it, it turns out to be a roll call vote, so let's do it.
It is, I know. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans-Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu-to?
I will abstain.
Okay.
Good, boy, good move.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Chair.
Madam Chair, the previous vote was unanimous.
Because that, we can use, thank you, the previous vote being unanimous, we can say each of us, just check the little boxes. Move on.
Chair. Yes, just for practices, we're supposed to be stating why we abstain. I know why he's abstaining, but can we get in the habit of...
Okay, if one abstains, one needs to just say why.
I abstain because I was not presenting the board at the time.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, moving right along. Item F, Ad-Hoc Safety and Security Committee Report. Who's up?
I think I'm, I'm taking it. So we met on March 18th. It was Directors Long and myself, Superintendent Stallow, and Director Bo Powell. We were missing two individuals of our committee with a administrator change occurring. Our agenda topics included continued discussion on addressing the vaping, marijuana use in bathrooms, bathroom accessibility for all students, the student handbook, and any staffing updates around security. I think what I wanna, it's in there in, in terms of more detail, what we did in terms of accessibility in facilities. We'll continue to evaluate bathroom design, but really, the focus we had previously was on bathroom lockage, and students had come and spoke, and the Youth Advisory Council had spoken to it. So trying to get arms around that, and my question here that I'm posing for all of us, and I think it requires board discussion, is what are the steps forward to producing measurable and timely outcomes to that bathroom issue? Because we are in the same place we were over a year ago, which is bathrooms may or may not be locked, although I think it was mentioned that principals are stating they're not. So I'm asking, at, at some point, this board's gonna have to give a directive or a plan moving forward, because we are in the same place. And then continued discussion on the student handbook. We received no feedback from the board. We are going to be working through the standard protocol and how that is reviewed, where input is gathered. When I was looking at previous budget votes, I did see that they were approving the handbook at that same time, so I don't know where that practice has been lost, but that is something that I realized. So that typically was happening right around June, and that was pretty consistent. I don't know when and why it fell off, but those are my two asks for this board, and if we're in a work session or continued discussion on it. We are hitting some roadblocks. Thank you.
All right. You have a question for the committee?
Yes. And so are you asking that the handbook approval aligned with the budget? I mean, I mean, it's...
No, you mean at the same time it was done?
Yes, I mean, during the same time period, back in, by June 30th. Is that the ask?
So I, I am asking for further clarification, because we've been trying to flush that out as a committee. What is the protocol? Who is invited to respond to it? What is the board's role in it? Because I think conversations have been had around that, some saying none, but when I did look back on it, the board was actually, it was an action item to approve it. I don't know when or where it makes sense to this board, so I'm not recommending anything. I know it's a misstep that we're not more involved in it.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is the, pardon me? Okay, the next item is the Governance Policy Manual Task Force Report.
We're the fun committee.
We are.
We are. Greta and I have been meeting weekly, pretty much weekly on this. If you will recall what we've done, and actually, it was, it's been in collaboration. It started with Ms. Molly Olson, our admin assistant, and Greta and I are working on it. And the focus of the work that we have done has been to customize where we can. So customize those items that we know we already have as information, like the bylaws, we made sure were put in there. And like, the picture that we're, we took tonight will also populate our book. And so the timeline, so we're at a spot now where our timeline for this is, we will present it to, we will give it to the board by the 1st of July, and then the focus will be that the board will have July and August to review the updates to the manual, and then we would like to ta, start an earnest discussion in September. Hopefully, we could get it approved relatively quickly. And then we will also include with our recommendations what the ongoing management of it would look like, such as, is it something we're gonna review every year at the annual organization meeting in January, or what does that look like? So we'll bring you the picture, the complete package with the timeline, and, and then we can, we'll be able to not have to have these reports after, after that.
And when you say customizing, you're talking about customizing the MSBA template?
Right, what we did in the customizing, and you'll see it, what'll happen in your review is you will receive a copy of the customized manual, and then you will also have access to the online manual that has not been customized, so that you'd be able to pinpoint exactly where. We've not really changed any language. What we've really done is put links in there. This manual will reside online for the ease of management so that it is always being updated by MSBA and that those links stay alive and vibrant. And so, yeah. The only one piece we have that Greta and I worked on that was different than just a mere customization of what we've already had was the section on roles and responsibilities. And that's the piece that I presented to Chair Evans Becker and asked her to bring it to a board meeting, a board work session for discussion at a future date. We also know that the manual could be approved without that even being added. The difference is, is much of the MSBA language in that is very statutory and sound and nature. It's the statute. And we didn't find statutory language to be relevant to the actual workings of the board. So we look forward to being able to take that off our desks.
Thank you. All righty. This takes us to administrative reports.
I don't believe we have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we're moving right along. Personnel report. Wait a minute, wait a second. Administrative reports, consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and are generally voted on with one motion and a roll call vote. And so at this time, is there any? Yes, Director Holmes?
I'd like to pull the licensed staff report, please.
The entire licensed staff report?
There wasn't one in there, so I don't know what happened to him. The non-licensed staff report is in there, but the licensed staff report?
Non-licensed. Right, it's not on the website. We got one in our packets.
It's in the packet.
Okay. So
So the license
And technically, is it in the consent agenda?
So is What are you telling me? That it's actually on the website, in the board packet? Okay.
I'm seeing a couple people shake their heads.
You can't access it right now, anyway.
So functionally, it's not on there.
So are we legally voting on it?
Has the board gotten a chance to review it?
I have. When it came in, it came in the packet. Licensed. And I guess it's not posted. It's not viewable. Okay. We all got it in our packets, though. What?
Well, we didn't, did we? Oh, wait.
We did.
Wait a minute. Can you tell me which document we're actually talking about? I'm hearing licensed, non-licensed.
The license, I'm pulling the licensed staff report, which I have in my packet.
The licensed staff report. That's the one-page item, correct?
In the consent agenda.
I can't access it except
Right, just currently, you can't access it through board books, but it's in our email.
Okay. All right. So anything can be removed from a consent agenda by request of a board member? The licensed staff report is being pulled for a separate vote. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Director Hellenbrand, seconded by Director Wuto. Right. Consent agenda is a roll call vote. We're voting on the consent agenda with the exception of the licensed staff report. Okay? Take it away, Director Bowman.
I have one quick question.
Okay.
And that is, is that going to come as a separate item? Is that what we're doing? We're not going to, right?
Right.
Tonight?
It's just pulled to be voted on separately.
Okay, just to be a separate item. Okay. And who made the motion against on this?
To approve it?
Is that?
It was seconded by Director Wuto and moved by Hellenbrand, I think.
Okay. I just like my records to be accurate.
We're just voting on the consent agenda, the entire consent agenda with the exception of the licensed staff report. Okay?
Great. Director Bassett?
Oh, for the, for the main motion for the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
With that other thing taken out? Yeah, I vote yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. The consent agenda is passed and now we have the licensed staff report to approve.
I'll move approval.
And moved to be approved by Director Bowman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Bassett. And Director Holmes, you have some discussion?
I did. It's in the email that I sent to Chair Evans Becker and Vice Chair Long. It relates to the five-year leave and the memo that we did receive back. Reasoning behind this is that I would like the board to consider past history of work leaves from past 281 placements all around the same time for this individual. The person's LinkedIn profile indicates that they had quit District 281 and now started a personal consulting company that works with intermediate District 917, which I believe violates the, or it is a conflict to the memo we had received from Director O'Hern on February 25th, 2025. The person's Facebook posting also shows that she has quit the district. And then I guess, moving forward, this, if the board approves this five-year leave and the reasons I just said, it would set a precedent where other employees expect the same consideration and similar circumstances. I don't believe that this serves our students and our buildings the way that we intended to.
Thank you. I would like to point out that our council has recommended that we approve this leave, that it works appropriately within our contract and a five-year leave is in the contract. And so I would like to recommend that we go along with what council has said, that this is an appropriate leave to grant. And if we perhaps do not grant it, then we, by statute, we have to explain why we wouldn't grant it. Director Long?
I guess I'm confused. I don't really know of other jobs where after you post and you tell people that you've quit, that then you can come back months later and then ask for a leave. So was there some kind of mishap that happened along the way? Because this just seems really confusing to me. Once you quit a job, I don't know that you can go back and ask for a leave then, a job that you've quit.
I'm just going with what council said, that she meets the qualifications to be approved. Director Wuto?
So I guess my question will be, is there any formal resignation from this individual to the school? If there is not, then I don't think Facebook or other mediums that we are referring to would be the places for us to make that decision that because we saw them post, we can't even justify if the Facebook account belongs to them in the first place. So I think as a board, we just have to be a little careful when we make those decisions.
Thank you, Director Wuto. Director O'Hern?
Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Stallow. I am going to 100% agree with Director Wutan. Welcome. We cannot use social media as our viable platform of what we are getting our resources from. I will tell you that the person is currently on a leave from the district. That is reliable information that we have. The employee is employed as a consultant with another district. She is not an employee with that district, but she is working for that district as a consultant. I have verified that with that school district. There is a short-term contract for that consulting work. And that contract runs only for another 18 months. So I will share that publicly because that was information that was shared with me that I could share with you. Outside of that, she, the employee has asked for an up to five-year leave with an option to come back at three is what is in the contract. So that is what we have been working with, legal counsel, on that memo back to you on what was the request and making sure that we are following what is in state statute to make sure that you had all of the information you needed to make the decision.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands raised or points, I think we, pardon me?
I have a different question.
Okay.
And mine is, the positions that are eliminated, Superintendent, that doesn't mean that the people aren't still here in a different capacity. That was my assumption, but I thought since we're, since it's pulled, I'd ask. There's a section
Depends on the effective date, I think.
So the section that says positions eliminated, there are a number of positions that are eliminated. Do you need to see this?
I don't have that.
But it says the effective date is June 30th of 2025.
I know, but that, I had my question. And my question was, absolutely. And so my question is that are the, that doesn't necessarily mean those individuals could be retained in a different capacity, is my question. So just because that position is eliminated, doesn't mean that they're gone necessarily.
These positions were eliminated
Right.
across the district.
Yes.
These people, if they had enough seniority in that group that they were in, would be placed back into the pools to retain a job elsewhere.
That was really my question. So just because the position is eliminated, doesn't mean that they necessarily go away?
Sure.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. This will be a roll call vote. Because we have, we had the motion and the second to approve this. All right. Take it away, Clerk.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hellenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Okay, we have five yes, two no. The motion carries and so the licensed staff report is approved. Okay. Moving along. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're up to future events and adjourning the meeting. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved and moved by Bowman, seconded by Bassett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at 8:22.
Thank you.
We will reconvene at
This question
At 8:30 for our work session. Thank you. Thank you.
This would be something that.
I see Joel is not.
Just.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
More difficulties we have getting along, the more formal we should be because that helps get us past that. We talked about transparency and what does that really mean? And the fact that transparency really means preparation, reviewing materials ahead of time, directing questions ahead of time to the greatest extent possible to the superintendent, so the staff have time to collect, give you a better answer, board members have time to digest the information. We're recommended writing questions down, considering whether that question really is relevant to board's role and governance as opposed to management, and thinking through their relevance for me. And we did talk about grandstanding, the importance of not grandstanding when we're speaking at meetings. We discussed the training that I'm going to go over in a minute. We talked about some changes to the work's business meetings, work sessions. I still continue to believe it's not a good idea to be both in the same night, very long night, very tough night for board members. And the longer you meet them, the more emotional things become. And then we talked about being future focused. So those were the recommendations. I want to jump into the training materials that I provided, and I'm going to go right to page 10 of the materials. And right to the heart and soul of what we talked about with the board's role was governance and the superintendent's role at management. Again, the state of Minnesota has established a system where the model is that you hire a superintendent to manage your district. And you simply have governance authority, policymaking authority, big picture authority. And so your policy says that you hire only one person. So you have a loyalty, and that's the superintendent, and you hold the superintendent accountable. And at the same time, I would hope you also are going to support the superintendent too. Because our all ships rise and fall together. If you're trying to undermine the superintendent, that is going to come back negatively. And I often get criticisms from my wife that I'm too direct, and so I understand that, but I'm going to be direct here when I talk about a number of things. You know, if we have social media posts criticizing superintendent or the budget process, is that legal? Do you have a First Amendment right to do that? You do. Does it make sense? Is it professional? Is it constructive? Or does it undermine the superintendent's instructions? And I ask you to think carefully about that because I think it's really a lot that's happening there. The board acts as a body and not through the individual members. I wanted to reiterate this because we talked in the last training about the question, does what an individual board member requests reflect the will of the board or the will of that individual board member? And the superintendent responds only to a majority of the board. Same is on me as counsel. The board directs me what to do, but if the majority of the board says, Mick, I want you to take this action, if it's legal, even if I don't like it, I'll take it for you. Because that's who I answer to, is the majority vote of the board. And that's similar to the superintendent too. But if one board member says, Mick, I want you to X, Y, or Z, I'm not going to respond to that. Because I, single board member has no power, no authority, save the board chair, has some special powers, has a chair. And I mentioned this, that individual board members have no power, because there have been a couple situations that have come up where there's been a suggestion that individual board members serve as the boss or as the supervisor, the superintendent. That's just not true. The board is a body, serves in that capacity, but not individual board members. So it's a quorum activated authority, and we want to be sure that we're being mindful of that. If we jump up to page 17 of the materials, we talked about preparation for meetings. And had a good discussion about that, I thought, back in October. And one of the key things in the number one point here is no surprise questions. Preparation means you review the information from the superintendent or the administration, ask questions before the business meeting if at all possible, and then lengthy discussions happen at the workshop here. And one of the things that I can say is, boy, there's been a lot of improvement in this area, but there's still some improvement to be made because at several board meetings, there have been a lot of surprise questions that have come up. And there really should be very, very few of those. Sometimes it's going to happen, you know, it can't be avoided, it can't, but it should be few and far between. That's important because asking questions ahead of time, again, it gives you an ability to digest the information better, and it builds trust with the administration. When you ask surprise questions, it comes across, well, I'm sure board members don't be, but it often comes across as critical, blaming, negative, judgmental. And when you look at the way your, the employees of the district react, that's one thing. Dr. Stallow was pretty uptight. You look at other employees when they present, they talk, you can see it on their faces, you can see it in their body language, how this is impacting. And I don't know if board members realize the impact that their actions are having on employees. And so again, we want to make sure we're not coming across as blaming, judgmental, critical of the staff we're presenting information. That's really just not appropriate. If you, I'll continue this one second, if you have feedback, who do you give that to? Your one employee. And you give that to the one employee, not in public light, and say, oh, I'm upset with so-and-so how they did this. Before the next meeting, you have a meeting, you talk with Dr. Stallow and say, hey, here's my feedback about this. And we're going to kind of talk that through. Also, employees don't know how to respond when individual board members make comments that are kind of biting, judgmental, blaming. And why don't they know how to respond? Because they don't know if that represents the will of the board or just one individual board member's response. And so that's another reason why we want to be careful not to do that at the board meeting. It really causes a lot of confusion. Director Bassett.
Well, I think that, I don't think we can have very much argument about that. I think that one of the things that our, the board did not do, and I think probably should have done, is actually have a conversation about policy governance. Because policy governance is a choice. School boards get to make that choice. By the way, in Minnesota, policy governance is the way they, most boards have chosen to operate, and I think that that is really the hallmark of MSBA and many others. And so I think it's important to know that there are other models of governance. And so, and sometimes you might get a blend from a number of these. When I say a part of governance, I mean that sometimes the board deliberately decides to go under the line. And they deliberately decide that if they see circumstances that are concerning to the board collectively. Now, I'm probably not telling you anything you don't know. You know that that can happen and does happen. Policy governance is a choice, it's not a law. I mean, so, and I'm not speaking against it. I'm just being clear that, you know, when it's talked about in certain ways, people believe that it's the Holy Grail and you can't do anything else. That's just really not true. It's the practice and custom in Minnesota. And for the most part, it's my understanding, and you certainly can correct me, but that's my understanding. And for the most part, most boards in Minnesota kind of ascribe to it. And I've certainly operated that way for many, many, many years myself. So I mean, I'm not an adversary to it, but I understand that it's not law.
But the law doesn't say the board shall be limited to policy governance, but it really does establish a system.
Well, I understand that.
It really does establish a system where you hire a superintendent, and that superintendent is licensed and is knowledgeable in the area, and then hires other people who are licensed and knowledgeable. I think your point is well taken. There can be at times when there's a blend of things. But one thing I'm always reminded of is I heard a speaker one time talk about the fact that your district has a $200 million budget, annual budget. If I, if you have a $200 million company that you own, Director Bassett, and I said, you know what, I would like you just to go on vacation, relax, let me have a ring, let me finish, let me have the things, I'll be 24 times a year and I'll run that company for you. You'd say, you're crazy. You're crazy. And I'd say, well, 24 times, I can do everything for a $20 million budget that's got, you know, 4,000 employees or whatever the case would be. You would say, you're absolutely crazy. We need that structure to make sense.
I didn't mean anything that are convinced that.
No, no, but I'm just saying, that's my response to the problem.
Okay, well, I mean, but I do think that this is a training that somebody decided we're going to have. The board did not collectively discuss.
I know where it is.
Let me finish. The board did not collectively have the conversation. There are a number of things where that happened that the board collectively have not discussed and decided. So somebody is deciding what the will of the board is, and it's not the board members. Okay? I mean, let's just be clear about that. Because there are a number of things that people want to talk about, and they're not talking about. I ask a question, if I say, what is the training about? When are we going to talk about our professional development? If I don't get a response to that, that's not okay. I mean, I like following the policy governance. I like having a responsive, in this case, chair. Because that keeps down nonsense, just to answer the question, if you know the answer. I mean, why do we have a central person if you're not going to answer a question? It's not, this stuff shouldn't be a secret. If we're having a meeting and we're going to have professional development, and who, how did that get determined? You know, who's going to be the facilitator? Those are all conversations that, the history of this board, this district is a board, the board had the conversation together and decided. And everybody got to talk about when the date was going to be together collectively because everybody's on vacation. So I guess the point I'm making is that I have a problem when we talk about the perfect world, the perfect model, when it's not that. And so when there are challenges. And so I think that any training that we have about this, I would like for there to be some balance with challenges and what undermines it. Because there are some things that undermine policy governance, and the lack of communication is a big one. I mean, when that happens. I mean, I think it happened before. We ended up having a chair change.
And I think that there are challenges, and the whole reason why we had the training in the first place. And, you know, I think when you're having such deeply rooted issues between board members, it's not a situation where we're going to get consensus support. And I would also say that, I'm not aware of a district in Minnesota, there probably is one out there, but I'm not aware of one that doesn't practice policy governance as a school board.
It's Minnesota culture.
But it relates to the way the statute.
Well, that's true, but it's also culture in Minnesota. I don't want to argue, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just acknowledging the reality is that there are other models that you use in other places. This is hard to describe to, what you hear from MSBA, you're going to probably hear from MASA and the others. You know, I mean, because, I mean, it's just kind of the way it is. And I think it works.
Building questions now, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So I want to speak to surprise questions, because I had this. And when we had, I want to make it clear too, when we had our training before, there was no question answered because you came with your packet and spoke to us. There was really no discussion.
Actually, that's not true. We had a Q and A at the end that I took it many questions.
It was very brief. This isn't, this isn't...
I just wanted to say, I did have a Q and A.
Okay, well, I had lengthy ones, and we didn't get through them. It was a very rushed process. So if the point's not to avoid, or the point is to avoid surprise questions, then I know this was talked about, materials need to be made available well in advance. Because I can't get documents on Friday and turn around questions by Saturday at night when we're talking about this much of information, and when we're talking about $21 million worth of cuts. So to expect that kind of turnaround from board members where it's essentially, I mean, it's, we're essentially volunteers here. Yes, we're elected and we're here, but that's not reasonable. And then what, in terms of, when presentations are given for the first time at the board table, there are going to be questions when there's no information on them. So we get the safety and security presentation in October, for example. It was slides, but it didn't have the substance in it. So we're going to react at the table, and I have, I think I did a dozen questions that night, and then I had more when we went through the presentation. We never circle back. So the notion that there's surprise questions, no, they're in-depth questions because the information is given, sometimes without relevant supporting information, and then also the quick turnaround time.
Just to kind of confirm a couple of the things that you said, that matters. You know, I mean, for people who do care about policy governance, it matters, is to get the amount of information and content that helps you really understand what the question is. I mean, don't, and I don't want to be laborious, but it's a two-way street.
I mean, I think that I would have that conversation with the superintendent offline, where you would individually say, hey, this is our conversation.
I see what you're talking about last time we talked. I mean, I feel very comfortable talking with the superintendent about anything that is on my mind. And he's been very receptive during when I've talked about some of the challenges or some of the things. I know there are a couple of things that probably I think I agree with, but we've got a packet this thick, and then by certain night you've got to have it. And some of it, if you don't even have the executive summary about what is, what's most important in this data, you know, that's helpful. If you've got a lot of data, what's the a-ha's? You know, so that people can go to them and move along. So that's, this is not the forum for that. But I'm just saying, it's the kinds of things that can help the directors because there is a lot of information, there is a short turnaround time. That got changed a couple of years ago. It used to be a longer, the time to ask those questions.
When do you get your materials?
The first round is Wednesday. So Wednesday, I would say, at least since I've been here, 85% to 90% of the packet is ready. So on Wednesday, the board members get it by Wednesday afternoon, late afternoon. It's not released to the public until Friday. So Friday then, late afternoon, it's released to the public and the board members get anything that, any presentations that weren't completed. So Wednesday, they have most of it. Friday, they get the full thing. The request is that I get questions by 9:00 PM Sunday, so that we then have Monday to work and to prepare to either answer those questions and send an email to all board members or to embed the answers in presentations. So, and I don't know, this is, this is a similar timeline to what I'm accustomed to, and I don't believe we have the Wednesday evening, so.
Yeah, most districts, I think, are Thursday evening, Friday morning. So I think that that's not, and I think there's a balancing act there too, because you're trying to gather the information together. But that's something I think for, for the folks working, it's like, okay, how do we, how do we do that? And maybe we try to have it 100% on Thursday and drop the Wednesday piece or whatever it might be. But.
Director Wong has a question. So, and then just kind of a clarifying point around that. So when we get the packets on Wednesday, on Friday when we get them again, I have to go through the full packet again because I don't know what was added, what was changed. There isn't a little indicator on there as to what was added or what was changed. So I don't know that unless I go through the whole packet again. So I feel like I'm going through it twice.
Isn't it, I thought it was...
I sent an email that she sent out.
It's highlighted in the email that she sent out.
She usually sends an email out.
Yeah, but I still need to go through, whatever I got sent on Wednesday, I go through it. And then on Friday, I need to go through it again because there are changes made, but there's no highlighting, okay, this was changed, or that was changed, or this was taken out, now this is put in instead. And so I don't know those things unless I go through both packets and then compare to see what has changed and what hasn't.
Well, maybe that's, again, decide, that's because we could do it once.
I appreciate getting, I appreciate getting it Wednesday. And then what I thought we got on Friday in the attachments were anything that was additional.
Or updated.
Or updated, just in what we get on Friday.
Yeah. There could be significant updates, and so it's not consistent.
So maybe that's an area for compromise, to say, okay, we dropped the Wednesday piece and we dropped the Friday piece. And I don't know if it's people's, I'm not committing you, but maybe that's a compromise to say Thursday, and it's all totally done then. And that way people know, and you know, we'll have to read through it twice, and maybe that's helpful.
I'm neutral. But I can tell you that there are a lot of times when I sit down right there, I go on a chair, and you get a bunch of information, you've got to figure out where it goes in the package, so you're sitting up there trying to stick it in there so you have the document, because I like paper. This is education. So we all learn differently.
So we try to, again, we'll try to do that, maybe that's something for, that's feedback that we can take. A couple of things.
Okay, excuse me. I think we had a few more fingers up.
Home, yeah.
Holmes and Wong, is that right?
I think what we talked is, we're doing some work.
Yep. Number keys, I'm just going to go through the elephant in the room. So we've had different legal representation come and speak with a different chair about what you talked about, one employee. We had Ann Goring come and speak about Minnesota statute and our implied roles and responsibilities, or our required roles and responsibilities. I want to get to a point, and I don't know if the board needs independent counsel, I know you represent the district, I get that concept. We can't change representation based on who's sitting in the chair.
Role.
So what I'm saying is, some like you, some like a different person. We can't have that and expect to function well. Does that make sense?
I'm kind of lost.
Yeah, I guess, no. I mean, the reality is that at some point, I'm sure I will rub each of you the wrong way because I will give you an opinion that you don't like. And that's the reality, but I'm not going to alter my opinion to try to curry favor with one board member or a faction.
No, and that's not where it's going.
But, and maybe it's just the style that you like, I don't know.
No.
But we should be consistent with our advice. I mean, the experienced counsel like Liz Beer and I have consistent advice because we both apply the law. We're not looking at those external factors. And I'd be surprised if there's anybody who's saying something that substantially departs from what I'm saying.
November 6, 2023, Director Bassett, Ann Goring.
Oh, Ann Garrett.
Garrett, thank you for the correction. Came and spoke at length about our responsibilities of the board. And for me, it's different than what you're saying right now, and it's recorded. I don't know how to get into that or when it is. My goal is that we are consistent and it doesn't change from chair to chair.
Well, I think you could, by majority vote, decide who you wanted to use as your counsel for the board.
But that wasn't the practice.
The chair has the authority to reach out and to determine counsel. And, but again, if the board wants to, by majority vote, if you say you want, Mick, you rub me the wrong way. That's fine, you vote that way and you, the majority vote, you have the rule or you determine the day.
Wait, wait, it's long now. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, mine's kind of going a little backwards from Kim. It's still, if we're getting these packets on Friday, I still don't have enough time to process all that information and get questions to you, especially if the meeting's coming up on Monday.
Thursday. Could you do it if everything was in the packet Thursday or what was?
Possibly, if everything was in the packet on Monday or Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday. We're talking about Thursday as a compromise, was the discussion.
Well, she asked me the question, so I'm giving my honest opinion. We're assuming positive intent here, I'm not trying to, I'm giving my honest opinion to her question.
I'm saying Monday before.
Yeah, the Monday before.
So the Monday before the...
Like I have like almost a whole week.
Oh, we've got a month.
Yeah, I think that I would need that.
The problem is that rarely does a district have all the information that far in advance. But again, that's something for you guys to work on internally, and I'd say if that's a discussion point, I have no idea what the abilities are or aren't in this particular district. I just know generally speaking, it's hard for districts to pull that far in advance.
My only concern, and I appreciate that, yes, it takes time to go through, but that's what we signed up for by running rate. And I think that the, there is, if we expect it a week before, that means we're always getting late information, right? We're not going to get the most up-to-date information because they're only going to be able to give us what they're absolutely sure of on Monday, right? And so we want it to be as in the moment and supporting the work of the district, you know, not slowing work down, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I think there's a compromise in there, and I don't know if it's Wednesday or Thursday or whatever the day is, but I just, Monday seems a little bit far in advance. Director, have all the links and attachments there.
Thank you, Director Wutu.
Yeah, I think, just as the new guy on the block, with the observations.
Hey, are you?
With the observation and what is leading to this change discussion, it sounds like it's a questioning during board meetings. And so if we are not willing to look at sending those questions to the right people on time, if we do that when the board meeting is ongoing, they may or may not have answers to us. So then we should be willing to take their answers that say we will get back to you. That's the way I look at it. So I don't, I don't know if we have to change the format necessarily, or if the board agrees that's what we do, that's what we do. But I think what is leading to this discussion sounds like is the agacha type questions that we do on Monday evening, that the presenters may or may not have answers for us, right? So then we should be willing to accept that. So just because you ask the question, doesn't mean you get the answers that you're looking for if you ask it on a Monday.
That's fair. Director Bassett?
You know what, that's always been fair. And sometimes if I ask a question, I will actually include that. You don't have to give me the answer right now, because you recognize it's going to take time. I think that that's a very important point, but I think so too is Director Wong's. Because sometimes the packets are very large, and for people who work, feeding that time in to get it all read and stuff is, can be a challenge. And so, yeah, people signed up for it, and I think people in good faith try to do it. I mean, I do it, you know, and come in. But I think there's a happy medium. So I think, I feel like the superintendent heard what we said about the volume of the information, making sure that we get as much information as we can. Because when you get information the day of and it changes and you get it on Friday, it can be off-putting. And so, and the questions don't all come when, you know, at a certain point, that as far as I'm concerned, and this is the way I operate. If I have a question, I'm going to propose it, I'll try to get it as soon as I can, and you know, I send you questions all the time. You know, I try to do that. And so, and I will continue to do it. But if I have a question because something I have thought, I mean, we're all thinking people. So if you have a thought that you have thought of, then don't be making a decision when you don't know what you're doing. You know, that is the fire for me, is making a decision with information I feel good. But I think I really like what Director Wutu said because it's common sense, you know, if it takes more time to gather it, or you don't, if we don't have the answer right away, I'm familiar with that. I have been living with it.
Director Holmes?
I thought that's how we were operating, to be honest. But all questions would be welcomed, and if the answer wasn't there, that's just professional meetings.
Yes, I know.
I just don't like the notion that because I ask a question, it's a surprise question. So if we're going to assume positive intent, then it needs to go both ways. Because we're not going to do this, oh, staff is getting upset by your questions.
But have you gone back and listened? I encourage you to go back and listen to your last or watch the last business meeting.
I watched a lot of it.
And, you know, when I sat through that, I thought to myself bluntly, we're here. Because they were blaming, they were accusatory, they were negative, they were judgmental.
I'm just going to stop you for a minute because that's your personal observation.
No, that's pretty objective. I'm not the person being asked that question. I was sitting across the room and I could objectively see it, hear it, and watch body language responding.
That's not your job. That's not your job to interpret body language.
But it is your job, as part of this training, when we're talking bluntly, it's not okay for board members to attack subordinate employees during a public board meeting.
I have never attacked an employee.
Maybe not, maybe you haven't intended to, but the way your questions can come off can sometimes be interpreted. And so my point is...
I'm here doing a job.
The model is for you to communicate with the superintendent if you're unhappy with a presentation that a subordinate employee gave.
Can I ask?
And who's your one employee? It's the superintendent. It's not to ask questions that are, put that person in a spot to make them look like they're either incompetent.
So then what is the board's responsibility when the information is incomplete?
It's to go to the superintendent afterwards and say, I found that information to be incomplete, and I would like more complete information presented next time.
And then it does not come.
And the question then, the second question to that is, is that the will of the board or is that an individual board member? And that's sometimes hard to parse out, but you could always make a motion at the table and say, I would like to make a motion to have a more in-depth presentation provided that covers these points. And then see if that motion is supported by three of your colleagues. And if it is, then you get that information.
I guess I may mean more for collaboration than trying to get the majority of the board because questions are our job and they're not gotcha. You know, I mean, and you're going to say, who would want to work there? I have four students. I'm saying, why do I send my kids here? I'm saying, why do I send my kids here sometimes? And I ran for a reason. And when I brought that up, that the answer has been, well, I respect that. And there are, this is not just me, we have a pattern of losing students. So we've got to get out of the mindset that concerns and questions should be avoided or are harmful because we need to stop what we've been doing and figure out the root of the problems.
Absolutely. Questions, they're fair, they're not gotcha questions, they're not surprises, for sure. Yep. And when you look at why did we talk about this, where did the board come from? Where was this board six months ago, seven months ago? And we're trying to say, how even collaboration? I'm trying to give you the tools to do that with both the administration and each other.
Not you yet, it's on the first.
Yeah, I guess going back to kind of what Kim was saying, it just gets really confusing when it's like you have these conversations, you have these conversations, and then when it comes to the business meetings, all the stuff that you had already asked for, which we thought we were, had discussed it during a work session, now it's like this report that it's like, how come we are talking about stuff that seems like should have been last year and then we're not going to have questions about that? So, you know, like when she talks about that safety report, that's something that has been talked about during ad hoc meetings, it has been talked about during other times. And then we got this presentation and it was like, so I think our concerns were already brought up several times, and then it still was a concern when it was brought to us, like, like, where's the disconnect? Like, what's? I don't, can you, I'm just having trouble following.
I am, me too.
Can you, can you clarify that? I'm just having trouble following what you're talking about. Is this something that happened at the ad hoc committee meeting? Is that what you're talking about?
You want me to?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just trying to follow.
We formed the Safety and Security Ad Hoc Committee as the will of the board because of our concerns around safety and security in the district, operating and functioning. Did a lot of work. And this is not a pointing fingers at anybody, lots and lots of work with staff. And then we had a presentation this past October on safety and security. It did not have substantial data in it. The board did not see it before in a work session.
And we had asked to see before a work session.
And we, I submitted, I think, a dozen questions that evening, and then we had a, quite a few more that evening. And the work that we did in the ad hoc committee was not reflective in the presentation. You're talking about eighteen months of work.
And you're referring to something happened in October, that's why I couldn't follow because I didn't know.
Well, it's, I mean.
The final presentation.
It's an example because of the expectations that are being put on us as board members. So it's, we're giving an example of what's.
No, I completely understand, I just didn't understand the example, so I wasn't following the point. But now I follow and understand.
Well, and I think this is part of the hiccup is we have people coming on at different times and new counsel versus the counsel we've had. So I don't know how to continue productively when we're, we keep going, we're trying to go and get some ground rules, but we're all coming in from different points of time. So we're planning catch-up here, and I don't know how productive this will be.
You had your turn. Okay, Bassett, Director Bassett?
I, when I ask my questions, Mr. Wolfsberger, I'm not necessarily saying we need different counsel. So I don't, I heard you say something about that, and so that's not where I'm coming from. But what I am saying, and because I'm understanding what Director Holmes is talking about, because we did have a presentation, this whole issue of will of the board and all of that came up a while back when directors were newer. And they were being, you know, there were, some challenges happened from other directors about, this is not the will of the board. So I think the whole concept of will of the board got subverted, in my opinion. And I think one of the things that helps determine the will of the board is when issues come to a work session. When issues come to a work session, the directors have an opportunity to talk to each other. I can't tell you how many times I've, over the years, I've changed my mind because somebody said something I thought was, well, that makes sense. I mean, I, it's just my natural orientation. And that's how you build trust. That's how you begin to build relationship, is by talking about issues and hearing what other people have to say. When somebody's gatekeeping the agenda, that's not the job. You know, hearing what people want to talk about and filtering that along with what the administration says we must do is the job. That's why we pay the big bucks. But gatekeeping the agenda setting so that issues that people don't want to talk about don't get there, that's where the magic happens, is when directors are talking with each other about a given issue. And that can't be legislated, that building of trust, that can't be commanded. Because I know for me, I only trust when I can hear what a person is saying, see, kind of assess where they're coming from, ask them directly, is that what you mean? Those are the opportunities to develop collaboration. And I have seen that work for twenty years. People worked it out together in work sessions. It was perfect. But I'm just saying, we, you know, I mean, that's been, now it's, everything has to be legislated. I mean, we can't have a conversation unless it goes to the attorney. I, no, this, I've never seen an attorney so much in my entire twenty years. I've seen an attorney coming to board meetings and being involved in board stuff more than I have in my whole twenty-two-year career. And that's where the board was. Well, you know, and that was evolving, and that was, everybody acknowledges there were some challenges. I mean, that's not, you know, that's okay. But I'm saying that a way forward is not more legislation and not more control. A way forward is for people to respect each other and collaborate and discuss. That's the way forward. And that's something that the board determines because one of the things that I'm clear about is, no one person is the superintendent's boss. But collectively, it's our job to make sure that things are happening the way they should. And so we haven't set our monitoring standards up yet because we've been busy doing all this other stuff. We need monitoring. We need to figure out what we want to monitor, what's important to monitor. And we would have that conversation. So I mean, and so, in some sense, I see, I understand where you're coming from, you know. But the only way you get there with a group that's trying to go in the same direction is if they get to talk to each other. Unless that's somebody gatekeeper, what can be talked about?
I'm not sure what the gatekeeping is.
Well, and I don't want to blow down that rabbit hole because I mean, but I'm just saying, I think anybody who feels like, who feels that way can make, feel that way or not. I mean, I'm just, that's, that's my language.
I understand.
Dr. Stallow and then Director Bowman?
So I, um, so July nineteenth and twentieth was the first time that I was with you. And I had, July nineteenth and twentieth was the first time. I could not agree with you more than what you just said. And I have served in multiple districts, and that's exactly what happened, right? So on July nineteenth, and you have a little packet with six slides from a very long retreat presentation. My goal was to bring tools and expertise, I felt, not my goal, one of my roles, I think one of the reasons you hired me, was to bring tools and expertise to help a board that was struggling. And I watched for a year a district and a board that was struggling. And to bring some tools that other districts, including two I had worked with in, one as a superintendent, one as assistant superintendent, bring tools that worked for efficiency. So in this packet, the packet piece that, yep, I'm just going to review this because you're going to, you saw the same thing after knowing me nineteen days, and then I brought it back to the board, agenda planning. So, one of developing a pathway for success, I believe that, and that's experience, and it's about excellence in management, my job. My job is to implement the strategic plan, and my job is to ensure operational excellence. I did that, and I showed you that very first weekend that we were together, what I was going to create with our team and what I have created, the district system of continuous improvement. I have tried to work on the board roles and views of a three-year planning and the agenda planning document. I showed you this July nineteenth. I have brought this back to multiple agenda meetings, and I'll share with you in a minute, and then that whole notion of the board agenda flow. So, in my world, before Robbinsdale Area Schools, excellence in board governance is on the next slide. There are five roles of the school board. So what I did every year, and my board chair, my first year as a superintendent, my board chair and I went and visited another district because they had used this tool. Everything on the agenda, there's no gatekeeping because it's all planned in advance. And every agenda item in a work session is around the five roles of the board. District governance and policy, operational oversight, board governance, superintendent relations, and public engagement. Those are the five roles. And a year in advance, you can predict out, you can say, okay, for policy, over the next year, we're going to do two hundreds, three hundreds, and four hundreds. We've got to get the rotation. We know that we are going to be hiring a new superintendent, so we need to make sure that we've got a timeline around that in the superintendent relations. We know that we're going out, we're going to be closing some buildings. So we know around our community engagement, we know we've got to plan that out for a year. So we can predict some things. So the tools like that make it predictable. I've never in my life had board agenda planning sessions like I have here. It should be predictable. There's a cadence of what needs to happen with board business, and then there's a cadence that the board looks out to say, over the next three years, what should we be thinking about? And then how does that backdrop into the next year? I'm going to keep going right now. In this same presentation, July nineteenth, I showed a copy of a three-year planning document for the board and then a one-year, and I brought that one-year back, and we actually are tracking it. We're using it internally. What I love about this document, and what, you can talk to any of the three board chairs that I worked with in prior lady, it's complete transparency to the public. This is the first document that we show at every study session, and the board chair introduces it, it's in a board packet, they see what the flow of the whole year looks like, the whole community does, and they know tonight we're going to be focusing on policy and community relations. And then I'm just going to show you one more time, the agenda ideas are very similar to what I also presented in January, again, around the flow of the meeting and how it's all about the five roles of the board. There's nothing that's called board topics. It's about, everything should fit into those five roles of the board. The other thing that I think is really important, and you've heard this from me, and I certainly have, I don't think it's an opinion, I have a strong professional experience around, we are having too many meetings and they're too long. So we can't have the robust study session that you were talking about because we're all exhausted by ten o'clock at some times. We can't get a board packet when we are doing four agendas a month. That is unheard of. Two business meetings and two study sessions, it's unheard of. So there is no way that we can produce those agendas and materials any faster than we are. So I just want to reiterate some tools that I brought to support the efficiency of board meetings in July, and I brought them back. And tonight, we were going to be talking about those things, as well as the flow of agendas that I think can make us more focused and more efficient. Because this, I believe, is going to be the easiest year we have in the next three years in front of us.
I've got Director Bowman, Director Holmes, and Director Bassett.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow, for what you just said, the items, the documents that you're working from, it's what I'm customary you're working with. The calendar, all of those things that you talk about. I don't really really want to go with these discussions, but for myself, there's really a fairy tale when people in this room say, I just want to have a discussion. Because I've been on this board for two years, and I've never felt part of a discussion. We keep going backwards, or we zing out over here, or we bring up information that isn't relevant to what we're talking about. I'm confused with, I can close my eyes and have it, to me, this is my opinion, is when questions may not be, when, it almost seems that when board members don't receive the answers that they want to the questions they're asking, we fall into a rut. And we keep bringing, or we keep bringing questions back and asking the questions again this way or that way, or if we ask it this way, maybe we'll get a different response. We talk in circles. We don't support the information that we get from our professionals. We discount it at every step of the road. Collaboration requires mutual respect in this group. If it's a one-way street to me. We have, you can go back to, if you want to talk about, I watch board meetings, you know who's doing the talking. And are we really discussing anything that's serving the kids? And so, when it comes to having help here, this is a veiled thing of saying, nobody supported the fact that when I was chair, I said, we really need to have some help, some legal help. And if this board disagreed with it, I don't know where else we were going to go. I didn't hear any comments from this board that would have produced adult-like behavior. And so what we've been trying to do, because we didn't have two hundred serious policies, we didn't have three hundred serious policies, we had nothing documented, we don't even have, when Dr. Stallow tonight at the meeting talked about the fact that it's a systems thing that is not in place in this district, it's the only truth that means anything to me at this point. Because, because since we don't have systems, guess what? We can deny that it was ever done this way, or we can just say it was this way, or we can disagree with the process that comes up with. We continue to stir the pot of chaos. Because what should be clear roadmaps and daily process and procedure within a two-hundred-and-twenty million dollar organization, for whatever reason, we don't have any of that. And we churn out at these meetings of questions that are the same, that keep us in the safe place. The allegation that there's somebody gatekeeping makes me want to walk out of here right now. It bruts every, any sort of little bit of trust. Because some of us are actually trying to get things done, and when we do, then we're told we're just gatekeepers. We're always minimized, we're always dismissed, we're always discounted, and the words are there. If you, you know, we could go back into our tapes and see it many times over. But again, here tonight, it will be denied. It will be denied that any of that is a problem, everything is fine, we just need to answer more questions, or answer that question again in this way. All we do is turn out and churn chaos. And I feel cheapened by the fact that someone at this table could say, if we just talked about it, what? What? Nothing would have given me any greater joy than being on this board in the past two years and had an honest, adult-like collaborative discussion with anyone. But it's not allowed here. That's not a voice that is allowed at this table at all, ever. So whatever you guys decide, you can talk about, oh, well, we don't want to use policy things, or we don't want to use this, or we don't want to use that, or we can't have this. Oh my God, that is what this community is sick about. That is the kind of communications I get back from this community. It's not the micromanaging of budgets. It's the way this group of grownups are not behaving like grownups. I'm tired of the double standard at this board. I'm tired of it. And you know what, Director Bassett, many times you have said to me, don't make your face, don't do this, and I'm watching what you're doing here this evening.
And you know what, I'm smiling, I'm sweating.
No, you're interrupting. I have the floor right now.
Don't accuse me of stuff. Don't turn to me, commentate and accuse me of stuff.
I have the floor right now.
You can have the floor, but don't attack me.
I have the floor.
Well, don't attack.
Because that is what goes on at this table. You have attacked, I have attacked. You have attacked, I have attacked, you have attacked. Don't look at me, I have attacked.
I'm not attacking you.
That's the game that gets played here. When are we going to get to the point where we have collaborative discussions? And then I will quit and I don't want to stay any further rest of the night. I'm done. I don't know where we else to go.
Anywhere?
I'm going to jump on change really quick. One, if that's okay, I just want to finish up a couple of suggestions. We talked about the fact that meetings are going long. They're better. There has been improvement, but they're still unacceptably long. And one of the things I think, asked you to think about is, when we had comments, again, we talked about those tools, are they germane to the motion, do they benefit kids, et cetera? That's all the materials. But we also talked about the possibility of adopting, of saying, nobody will speak, somebody's comment will exceed two minutes. You should be able to say anything you need of substance in two minutes.
Right.
Yeah.
And one time.
Yeah, one, you get one comment on a motion, an item up on the agenda, two minutes, that's it. You think about that, if all of you exercise it, that's 14 minutes per agenda item. It's still going to be long, but hopefully not all agenda items are going to encourage that. And so that way, you've got to say your piece, you can let partners know your thoughts and the meeting moves forward safely. So I'm going to encourage you to think about a two-minute limitation. And if someone goes over here, just call the question and move forward with the item. So also the board reports, I know the superintendent mentioned before, I just don't see there's a lot of taboo in the board reports, the way they are done. You could submit them in writing, you could transfer them to committee report and have a one-minute limit on those as well. There should not be, it's not a time to say, I attended 15 meetings, I did all these great things. No. I'm a member of the committee X, Y and Z and at the committee, we took these actions or we considered these options. And additional information, let me know. If you have questions, let me know. That kind of thing. It can be easily addressed. Just a couple of items and that's all I have on. Dr. Stallow, do you have more, if you want to add on to the piece?
No, and I think for me, it's just, let's land. You know, I think we, I think if nothing's going to change, then nothing's going to change. Then let's, then let's keep going. If something's going to change, then let's, let's look at that and what that could look like. I think between what Nick provided in October 10th handout, I think the summary, there were three areas that I looked at what he did, paid attention to what, what I had also paid attention to. And have three goal areas that I put out for the org meeting. And if, if none of that works, then, then fine, but then let's be done with it.
Okay. Just a minute. I'm going to have lost track on who's next. I know Director Holmbrand wants to speak, Director Holmes wants to speak.
Oh, okay. It's Holmes next, I thought it was you.
Okay, I think it's Holmes that's next. Holmes, Bassett and Holmes. But I got Holmes, Bassett and Holmes, we even went Holmes, Bassett, that's what I had with you.
Yeah. You said Bowman, Holmes and then Bassett.
Last check-in, that's what you had.
Yeah. Before Bowman made, that's what you had.
The first word you said was Bowman, Holmes, Bassett.
Okay, so that's what I have, I've got Bowman, Holmes, Bassett and Holmes. So Holmes is next. So, for me, when I was coming into this, I told you, I went back and I went and watched board meetings dating back to 2017, when they were approving new budget. And please, no disrespect to anybody here, myself, you. We are all just fillers in this organization. And what I saw was a lot of the same verbiage from the other superintendents. We're doing this for the students, these cuts hurt, we're going to do them away from the classroom. There was a lot of speaker, Relling United, the U...
UDV.
UDV, thank you. Unified District. Thank you. And then, you know, I mean, it's not fun to be doing these cuts. At least we're not doing it alone, it's happening throughout the district, the state. I mean, it was a script that any of us could have stepped into. And so my goal, by bringing that up, is putting in real processes that regardless of who fills these seats, can withstand the test. And the reality is, we tanked financially and we tanked student enrollment. And that's not on you and it's not on the majority, you know. It happened over a decade. But what is important to me is that the school board has an accountability role. And I'm saying that because you, we obviously did a 7-0 vote and hired you and liked your qualifications and your interview. The reality is, I saw it in all of those meetings. And so there needs to be a checks and balances in place for me in terms of systems or questions or would we interact? Because you had said yourself, well, in the previous district, nobody talked, the one board member who voted, you know, bad poorly in your review, never really spoke to you.
I'd like to that. Okay, public information in a public meeting? Thank you.
Okay, I'll be done. I was trying to talk to you.
I would love you to make, go ahead and please continue the conversation, but not talking about my previous evaluations.
I'm talking about how we give, about what?
Private personnel data, so you should, you should avoid any further discussion of private personnel.
Okay, where is the proper place to give you constructive feedback? So there are no surprises at the end of the year.
The appropriate place would be to do an evaluation of the superintendent in the closed session.
Right, no, I'm, but if we're talking about sending an email about this employee or that employee or how it was decided, it's not in attack mode. It's a, so we're not piling on and it's collaborating. I don't, I mean, when there's seven of us, yes, we all evaluate.
Maybe I misunderstood the question. The question then is, how do I give feedback after a board meeting to say, hey, I didn't like how my presentation was?
Not a board meeting, just in general, about our expectations. Because you keep saying it's the will of the board, the board evaluates her. How do we make it though, so? And it's not even her, the position. How do you make it? Because we had, I think we had a six-hour review for a previous employee. And so it's, it's making it consistent and being the same process. And nobody, we're talking about no surprises. And so, if you're really building with a leader and working together, then there should be an opportunity, it's what Director Bassett was saying, to talk and to get through things before they even become an issue.
But you can't talk about private personnel data on any employee, including the superintendent at an open session.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
So if you're trying to establish what your expectations are for the position instead of for, to say, I'm evaluating you, but let's talk about the expectations, you could certainly in a work session like this say, hey, my expectations for the superintendent would be X, Y and Z. How do other board members feel? Do we have a consensus on that? Do we have? And the problem is, I don't think you can assume any consensus on this board at this time. Maybe in the future, you know, things will keep moving forward. But it does seem to have some splits, you know. And so I think that you're going to have to work and promote that collaboration you're talking about in these sessions, talk it through to say what your expectations are without saying data on the superintendent, because you can't discuss personnel data. But you can certainly talk about, hey, these are the things I would like to see going forward, whether if you're board members or you're back.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? I wasn't trying to express data, I was trying to say the openness. It was expressed that you wanted to have open conversations with us in our, in our one-on-ones and be giving you genuine feedback or genuine thoughts, like. But now you're saying, well, nobody's a supervisor. I don't know how to have real conversations if it's, some of it's going to be like, well, that was just with one person, so it doesn't really matter. It's about going down the path in, in real time. I don't know how to convey that anymore. So it's clarifying our working relationship. So you understand more about, these aren't gotcha questions for me. This is how I get to a point where I can make a good decision for myself. So it's not a gotcha, it's a just talking. And it is, maybe it just doesn't exist because we meet two times a month and then we evaluate mid-year and then end of year. Then it's a flawed process. But if we're talking about real relationships.
I think that's the piece. I mean, quite frankly, Kim, I think that's the piece, I think it's trust. For me, it is. For me, it is with, with other board members that I've served with, with administrators. And, and I would say that's certainly something I probably haven't earned and I haven't gained with all of you yet. And that's going to take some time. I don't know how to do it without authentically showing up and being real. And quite honestly, I also don't feel safe in that space always. So I, I think, I think for me, it is about trusting relationships and I'm going to own my piece in that as your superintendent. And I do want to remember on August 26th, in a public meeting, that there was an attorney who has been practicing for 31 years that talked about this being the most dysfunctional board he's ever worked with. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't say that to be critical at all. But I, I just said before, I said that, Kim. I said that I'll certainly own my stuff in all of this. And I said yes to this job because I want to collaborate and work with the board on behalf of 10,263 kids. I think there's a lot that we have to build on.
And that's, I'm going to respond because that's my point. This board, before this board, and we're different now, those budget votes were 7-0, 7-0, 7-0. And we still ended up decreasing enrollment and still ended up operating in the red for all of those years. So it has nothing to do about the dysfunctionality. This is a democratically elected board and things have not been working. So building trust means getting to ask questions and confront difficult conversations head-on. And there's no welcoming space to do that. There just isn't. Here's your question.
Well, I guess I would say too, kind of speaking to the whole question of the trust thing. I, I do think that it takes time for that to build. And I do think that when we talk about assuming good intent, usually that can, that's visible. People may think they're doing it, but to the outside looking in, people can clearly point out that it's not true for some. I would say that, you know, comments that are made should just be taken in the spirit that they're made. I did not go back into 2023. I don't think I've ever been in a meeting where I've really brought respect. So to come into a meeting where people are being accusatory, when we're really doing so much stuff in 2023, I, so I just went, jumped over it, went to the next year. So to hear people then talk about those things like they didn't happen and is, is mind-boggling to me, quite frankly. So, and I'm not going to go back there now. But I was here and I sat through it. So I, and even, and then I still believe that we can go through and do the work that we need to be doing. To the point that you're making, Dr. Stallow, I like to call it Dr. Terry, Terry, you have to deal with whatever. But the point is that I think that the document that you prepared and brought in that July 18th, 19th, whatever that was, I think that that is good. But I also think that that too should be a working document and that pieces of it should maybe come to the work session where we're talking about it. Because I think not only is it your roadmap and plan, it's our roadmap and plan. And so if you brought it in July 18th and 19th, where is the opportunity that we ever had to have some input into it and say, what about this? What about that? Because as you know, school business is dynamic. So there are always things that are happening that we could talk about and say, oh, well, that may be better over here or over there. So maybe we bring pieces of this document into, into a work session meeting. And we talk about, here's a couple months down the road, here's where we're going. Here's what I want to do. Because if you're the only one looking at it, it doesn't mean anything to me. I'm just, I'm just being really crass about that. But it's not my document. I haven't looked at it since you gave it to us. Except if you bring it back and present it again. But if it's your living document and framework, I'm cool with that. That's what, that is why we hired you. But when do we get that, get involved? You know, I mean, I'm just saying. So it shouldn't be like a small closed meeting in a work session where you're talking it through and figuring it out, which is important. But it's a conversation for the totality of us. Because there may be something else that I think is important or that Director Wu told thinks is important, or Director Ma thinks is important. That's important too. That's how we build a cake, bake a cake together. Everybody's got a spoon and we all get stirred. And I'm not trying to take anybody else's spoon or anything. But everybody gets disturbed and spooned. And then we, you know, we all come to consensus and then you go for it and you conquer. And I think that, I think the, that foundation is there. I mean, I'm not in all the meetings you're in, I'm not in everywhere you are. I think the foundation is still there. But I do think that some course correction has to take place. You know, I mean, I think it's clear from this conversation. There's some, and maybe that's on our part, but I think you.
And we don't have, we don't have to use the tool. You know, I mean, we drafted, so, so I'll just tell the first time through, board chair and I drafted it, we did read it back and said, hey, we modeled this after another school district, what do you think? They agreed, they said, keep building it. We forecasted it out a year, brought it back, got ideas. So, so we can use it or we can not use it, it really doesn't matter to me.
My main point is, I think if we have a plan, I'm, I'm not, I'm okay with not reinventing the wheel. If we have a plan, I just think there needs to be some opportunity for some forecasting for everybody to follow.
Agreed.
It's not just the chair. Because who knows what the, when the chair is mine? You know, I mean, I've been in the chair before. I mean, you're not all seeing and all knowing no chair is, no human being is. You know, it's like, you can't act like that. It's not a unilaterally, it's my, our two decision and everybody else just go pick I. That's not where it works.
Okay. Director Holmbrand?
Yeah, I mean, really, my, I have two questions. What is the ask tonight, or the, the point of this discussion? And how to move forward? Like what are the next steps? Because we're, to Director Bowman's point, we are kind of going in circles at this point and not to say that things people have said are not important. But, but we're not, it's not moving forward. So I guess to me, we're going to be here, it's almost 10 o'clock. I want to know what the, where we're headed. I don't see the roadmap right now.
The reason it's on, sorry, Chair, do you want to?
No, go ahead.
The reason this is on the agenda is because after the January 6th org meeting, there was a request by board members to not adopt anything. I brought recommendations forward to not adopt this, but to bring it back to a work session.
So they're going to ask us if we're going to adopt, if we want to adopt this?
Yeah.
And otherwise let it go?
Great, that's what I want to understand.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off the, because I knew it's time to say that. My questions are kind of conversation, so please.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to get there, I'm not on the list for three more weeks. Director Ma, do you have something?
Yeah. So it's hard to have conversations about all this stuff when, you know, you sit in the background and you know that there is gatekeeping that goes on. And that there are some board members who know a whole lot of information and the rest of us don't know.
What?
And that makes it hard to make informed decisions about things, especially when you've been privy to some of the gatekeeping that has gone on within this board. So this is nothing, not a comment about you at all, it's about the board, okay? So that makes it hard when we're doing that to each other, to sit here and make a decision about how these things need to go on in the future. And so I guess I would like a commitment of, you know, transparency. I think I've asked that several times before. And that when we are going to have issues or changes, that we get a chance to sit down at a work session and talk about them so that there can be transparency and not some people know and then some people give that information to a superintendent, just generic. And then some of us are left out in the dark about, well, what happened and how this happened. So I would just like transparency in whatever this process is. Say what you got to say so that we can figure out what we need to do and move on.
Director Wu?
Yeah, I think my, well, sorry, the, I was, again, I'll use the new kid card, right? I feel like at the start of the meeting, there was an objective set to review some processes and procedures that can lead the board in the right direction. And then we derail that with a lot of comments that are necessary. But maybe those comments will come in place after we listen to some of the processes that have been suggested. Then we can build based on our individual comments, build in places where we think things are lacking, right? If we don't have processes, then it's going to be the same issue of, I feel like I don't have the information or you have the information and you are not sharing it. I don't think that's gonna work for in a elementary setting or gathering like we have, right? We all have, at the end of the day, one vote. Once the vote is passed, it is the board decision, right? So we should be careful not to point fingers at each other. I think we should come up with a process. Listen to council, let's listen to the training they have. And then we can sit as a board and say, based on what was said this night, this is where I want this information to sit. This is how soon I want information to get to us. And if it's not getting to us, is there a process for us to evaluate our all employees? Right? And all those things should already be known. But it, we, it cannot be known if we don't have a process, a good process in place that we can follow, okay? So I want to appeal to all of us, if it will work, it's already 10 o'clock, some of us work at 7:00. Yes, we committed to be here. But can we just complete the training and then either follow the agenda or decide that tonight's training is not gonna work and then maybe we can adjourn?
Thank you. Okay. Okay, this is the third time at least that we've looked at this. And it's, it's a process, it's a format. It's not locking us into this topic here, but it's in categories. Whatever we've been doing hasn't been working. This is something that has proven to work in multiple districts. And our superintendent is familiar with it. I would like to see us give this a try because we can't just keep on spinning our wheels. We can't keep on doing what we've been doing. And this is transparent, we'll be able to see what's coming up next and next, and next after that, like for a whole year, right? And so I would like us to, I would like us to try this. It's, it doesn't lock us into anything, but it gives us a format. It gives us order, it gives us a process. And it also, by doing that, gives us some flexibility, I would think. And so my choice would be, yes, thank you, let's give it a try. And we have like, is that the?
And specifically the, and specifically the, as well the recommendations that Dr. Stalo made on January 6th. I think that would be asked to say, too, you would adopt those plus the recommendation I made of two minutes of comments.
I love that. What I had to do would be separately, two minutes, yes.
So I need to know though, are we gonna have to open a work session to pay bills or not? Or can they all just be done once a month?
I don't think we're there yet.
You cannot, we have to pay bills twice a month, so it wouldn't be, oh, you can't do it in a work session. You'd have to do an open meeting, that last five minutes, you do a consent agenda, you close it, you go to the work session.
Okay.
How come other districts do?
You can do in a work session, if it's a regularly notice meeting, you can pay bills in a work session.
Can you really?
It's a note meeting, it's notified, it's noticed just like any other meeting.
I thought you could vote in a work session.
Nope, nope, it's just all a matter of your procedure and practice in your district. So you can add items to an agenda in a work session and again, I don't know if you have any policies that put it back in the district, but it's not an equal limitation because it's not a meeting law, it's not a meeting.
So why do we have to do twice a month?
Pay bills. And they're, within a, paying bills within a 30-day window
Is that required?
is a requirement. And if we, depending on the timing of board meetings, if, if you, if we're the first Monday of every month and it depends on how long the month is, we might already be past that 30-day window.
Is that why some only, cuz we just did it, it probably like, we just did it once a month?
I've never done it once a month.
Well, I take that back.
It could just be the timing of meetings.
I take that back. There are, I have been with boards that only do one meeting in July.
You, you can actually, there's a way to do it once a month if you do it within budgeted amounts.
Yeah.
And so if it's a budgeted, we could talk about that outside of this context. But if you have a budgeted amount of money and you know these bills are coming due, for example, like your salaries, you don't have to have the board approve the salaries. You know, it can be essentially done in advance. So we're saying we're approving salaries for the month of March. We're suing for the month of April up into this budgeted amount. And you can do that with other bills too.
Like utilities and those sorts of things, yes.
So is there any way that we could give more information on that?
Before we do anything.
Oh, wait, wait, but this. Adopting this format of the three-year agenda and the one-year agenda, meaning that kind of format, we don't have.
For clarity, can we just bullet point the things that we're talking about so that everybody's clear on what we're talking about today?
One thing at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so what I was hoping is we could go around and see if we have thumbs up about this kind of a format for scheduling for our meetings, okay?
So if you can, that's just kind of what, what loses me. Because first of all, it's just bullet points of items with no date, no timing, no nothing, it's just 24, 25. And then it's a long list of things. It's not clear to me what the cadence is. And I, it doesn't have to be totally, and first of all, it's so little, I can hardly see it. Anything that's this important should be on a whole big old slide by itself so we can clearly see what it's supposed to be. You know, I mean, I'm just like, you know, this is not clear. I mean, the issues are important, again.
I think this is a concept. And this is a concept. The concept for this is that it lays out, there are five responsibilities for the boards and they're all categorized. And we're gonna work through them throughout the year. And that there is a plan to work through them. And the details of the plan, we don't have to worry about. It's just like, can we go with this concept? I have a thumb up. Thumb up?
I still need to know what that, this finance piece, that concerns me.
Pay, pay a bill. That's different, that's different, that's different.
That's why I asked for us to bullet point that.
This is, this only has the concept of the five board responsibilities. Which way turn you want?
And we can work toward that and kick it off July 1st or have time at our retreats.
That's not the one that they're showing.
So, but so far, the feeling I got was, uh, uh, this is, uh, can I do a thumb up on this concept? I don't even know what you're on. Thank you. Okay, well, at least we have.
Can you see what page? Did you say it too, so people?
It's in the Terri Stalo presentation from July 19th. And it's like the fourth page in, and the fifth page. Okay, yes? I support the two-minute comment. I support moving board reports into committees or whatever. Those make sense to me. Asking us to act on this right now, I, I'm. Okay, yes.
Okay, so I think what this is showing is not necessarily meaning that the items that are collected are things that we are deciding on right now, right?
Right.
Um, it's, one of the concepts is that we all know as a school board that at the end of June or by June 1st, we have to approve a budget. So that is built into this calendar. So we know discussions for budget starts February 2nd or September 10th. Once that is done, we don't have to worry about that anymore. So we say, okay, for policy building, March or December is when we do policy building. The board is aware of that. We do our background research before that time comes and then we build that into the calendar.
That makes perfect sense.
And that's what this is talking.
Here's the thing, what, what I think is important to understand is just showing people this as it's now and not clearly talk about it as a concept and clearly say that there's more definition as to kind of how it works, the process for it, will be helpful. Because then we're not all assuming something different. You know, I mean.
This is, right, I think we're clear. This is, this is a format, this is a template. It's so that we can plan.
It's the things that need to get done in a year.
Over is a good word too. For three years, we have it at a glance. We can see what's gonna, what February happens or July happens. We'll kind of, we'll have an idea.
So the question is the process for getting to actually clarify those things.
And that's her job.
I know it is, but I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying is missing from this for me. Cuz it's just a bunch of words on page.
Okay, that's okay. Can you go with the concept?
I already said I could.
Right, perfect.
But I'm just, but I'm also being clear about, cuz I could, I could do anything in a meeting where people say, we talked about this in this month, we talked about this in that month with no definition.
Okay.
Okay?
And we're not implementing it smart.
No.
Like, like, build, build it, draft it, whenever we do board retreat, review it, get input, so we can maybe do it, kick it off July.
Okay, next thing. Great idea. One comment per person, two minutes long, and then we vote. And if you don't want to comment, that's perfectly fine. Okay? That was brought up for, at our meetings. If you have, if you have something to say about whatever's on the agenda, you can speak for two minutes and then anybody else can speak for two minutes. And if you don't wanna speak, that's fine. And then we vote. Director Long?
Who's keeping track?
Director Long has meaning to talk to you. Director Long has meaning to talk to you about that. You've been doing such a fabulous job. Yeah. You're the big winner.
That makes me feel.
Director Long is the big winner. Director Long is the big winner here. But can you live with two-minute comments, one per person, and then move on and then vote?
Definitely.
Can you live with that? One, two, three, four.
Is it just the two minutes that we're voting on?
Yes.
Two minutes.
Right now, we're just voting as two minutes.
Which is. Can we try it? No, but there's gotta be a little, I mean, I don't wanna be like, two minutes, you're done. Like, let's be adults. I, I, yes, we can. Let the thought wrap up or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that we can be concise though. I mean, the idea is jot your ideas down.
And we can be concise and it's ridiculous.
I, I think that we can. However, I, I just cannot move away from this conversation without saying, there are a lot of people who do a lot of talking around this table and only one or two get pointed out for talking a lot. But everybody talks a lot at this table and they have many questions and they have it all together.
I would say some talk more than others though.
Well, and, and, yes, and I, and I would agree. And we all may differ on who we think that is. I'm not just giving a.
Okay. But for two minutes, can, can we, at least for in general, unless it's highly contentious or whatever the problem, I mean, two minutes, two, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Whoa, is that a thumb up?
No, we said, I vote for two and a half.
It's two minutes.
I'm okay with two minutes.
Okay, so we're all okay with two minutes. We're gonna give this a shot and thank you Caroline ahead of time.
Yeah. Grina, I just wanna say, we had the rule where you could only speak to a question one time or you could ask a question and that is constantly manipulated. And it, it constantly is.
Okay, but now we have agreed to that.
Who's talking? I mean, I'm just acknowledging that has not been imperfect in the past.
We're gonna work at it.
I don't like that one either cuz sometimes people say things and then I'm like, oh, now my brain is thinking again.
Well, I, I hear you. I mean, I think.
Well, let's give, we'll give it a try and let this. Okay, the other thing.
In July?
Superintendent's recommendations, that's for.
Okay, can we just?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we do the board of course? A lot of, I mean, you wanna submit it in writing or keep it to one minute?
I like that, writing, one minute.
In writing? Board of course. Send it in writing and then they'll be sent as a, as an email to the board.
Good.
No?
Will they show up then in the?
What would you like?
On here? Or their emails to the board and that would be board business, so I'd have to be.
Make it available to public if they're received yet? Should be available.
So do you wanna not have board reports or do you wanna have it public? What do you think?
I think it has to be public.
If they're recent, if they're recent, everybody, it can be. All right? If you don't wanna give board reports.
That might make sense if you don't have one, there's nothing to say.
I know, but some people, we had a board report that went on 18 minutes. And that was really, really long.
And also it's the content, maybe that's helpful to frame content of a board report. I mean, to talk about, I've heard all kinds of things not related to board work reported in board report time. So maybe there's a criteria for what should be, a suggested criteria and what could be included for board reports, especially when you're dealing with new board members, you know, that may not. And if we talk about being able to build a structure of process and procedure, that would be one of them. I think would be recommendations on how to construct a board report.
Director Holmes?
Board reports remain the only time a board member is allowed to talk freely. You guys are locking this down where it doesn't mean to be locked down. We can put parameters around it, but I think you're trying, you're, we talk about not policing or not dealing in personalities. You're policing personalities right now. So if you put parameters around it and limit it to two to three minutes, that's something I'm on board with.
That's what.
We're adults, I don't think it's.
Okay, so I could, all right, so you wanna keep board reports? You wanna keep board reports?
I think she just said it. There's a couple minutes where it puts it. Or if you don't have one, don't say do one.
Okay, let's go, since we're speaking.
Wait, are you talking oral or written? Cuz that's both been talked about to me.
Right, right, now she wants it oral. What's the reasoning? Help me, why written? Just so that we don't have the, the extra things to discuss, I mean.
Saves 14 minutes from your meeting.
I'm sorry?
Saves 14 minutes from your meeting. If all seven people give a report orally, two minutes.
But this obsession about time is just crazy to me, like, I.
It's 10.
I understand the, and I understand where this district has been and where we're going. And I feel it's very important. I feel that's why we were elected. And if it takes the time, the topic determines the time of the meeting. The topic determines the amount of questions there. So yes, we can put guidelines in, but to have absolutely no flexibility discounts the seriousness of an issue.
This isn't an issue, I guess.
You see, everybody went to pounce on something.
Well, no, 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 I'm just saying that this is just board reports, right? So it's just, it's informational and, and we wanna make effective use of our time and the people who are watching these meetings.
I completely understand the mission.
People pontificating for 18 minutes is not a good use of people's time. And I'm just committed, I mean, I, you know, I hear people say they don't have enough time to review reports and I'm saying I'm committed to doing that. And I think, but I respect the fact that you feel like you need more time. Respect the fact that after 10 o'clock, this is just not functional for me. And I'll just speak for me. It's not functional. It's not, it's, it doesn't, we don't get anything done that's substantive. And in fact, we've had, that's when our meetings tend to break down. So to me, I'm just saying that it's not about limiting people's questions or limiting people's ability to talk. It's about keeping us moving forward with the work and being reasonable about the time expectations. And if we need to have another meeting on another week, I'd rather do that than stay after 10 o'clock. That's just my.
Okay, Director Wu-Tao?
Yeah, so I think, I was gonna just piggyback on what Dr. Taryn was saying is that the structure around these board reports will be very necessary, right? Because.
You mean what?
The structure and what we are reporting on, okay? So if I'm in the crowd listening to school board Okay, so if I'm in the crowd listening to school board, and they are telling me about all the meetings they've attended, and all these events, it's great, but what is the substance behind that? I should be able to summarize that in two minutes, and just move on, right? And, and so I think it's a matter of, not, not that we are trying to put limits on ourselves or cycle ourselves, box us in, but can we all agree that we can set, setting standards on what we are reporting to the public, and just keep it at that?
Okay, I think that's a big step forward. Two minutes. We won't get rid of them, we won't put them in writing, but we will limit them to two minutes if we agree on that for now.
I would only add, if you don't have any, if there is no report, I like that bullet. Another recommendation is to assume there is no committee report or another report, unless, you know, I mean, if you don't have anything to say, don't say anything. I mean, just to make a report, just to have a report, it don't make sense.
Right.
So.
Definitely. Okay.
As long as the language accommodates that flexibility.
I think we can move on, this is the next thing up. So.
You have what we're looking at now?
Just to accept the recommendations that were put forward by Superintendent Stubble on January 6, 2025, in the memorandum.
Do we need to accept that now? I thought we were gonna be working on that during work session and stuff.
And, you know, um, am I hearing you say just like a little more time to think about? But I think there's a, the things we have agreement on.
No, I'm confused.
We have agreement on. If there are a couple of other items where we don't, we haven't landed, I think that's okay. If we make it a point that we're gonna come back and talk about it.
But one of them here is the board will not meet past 10 P.M., right?
No, it didn't happen on me.
So, you know, when we're looking down at the, I think, let, let's walk through what you might.
Yeah, I think it's very important to walk.
Right, okay, so, at goal number one, can we all, can all of us agree to the twelve points under goal number one? Making focus on students, assuming positive intent, formality, personality, personalities, transparency means preparation. And then I think that's really gonna be future focus, the others are.
About the discussion?
Yeah. Can, can everyone agree on those? Is there a thumbs up on those bullet points? One, two, three, four, five, six?
What did you cross out?
Training.
Just training in business meetings, work-study sessions, because.
We have to talk about those separately.
Yeah, that work-study session, that idea is to move it closer around.
Okay.
All right, then, we've already talked about committee reports, so I think that that's okay. Listening time, I think is a different item. Dr. Stubble, unless you want me to try to reset here? All right. Goal two, improve meeting efficiencies, we've already added estimated time off of this agenda. The next one is the, are we committed to saying the board will not meet past 10 P.M.? How many thumbs up do we have? One, two, three, four, five? Yes, no?
It's not out.
Okay. Six, all right, so five, five thumbs up for that, and two down.
And it says, unless extenuating circumstances, and I hope that we have good common sense to, if something comes up.
So, all right, and then, um, the, the next one, we're gonna come back to the agenda that we need to, for the superintendents, do you want to do that?
The only, the only timeliness that doesn't have to happen like the second, but I think that that question about more than one board meeting a month.
Okay.
We, we don't have a board, we don't have a board meeting calendar approved yet, that I think came forward in January, and that was, we held on it because we wanted more time to talk about this. So I think, I think we just, again, have to eventually land to say, are we gonna try just one robust board meeting a month? And then a second one if we need to, with the robust study session, if we need to add a little bit of business. Well, even if it's just a little business meeting on the top of it, and the rest is.
In all likelihood, I am the one that's going to drive business meetings, because there will be just things that I don't control timeline on with weddings and money and debt and.
But again, my legal opinion is that you can do that, as long as it's publicly noticed, that's an open meeting. And you just put on the agenda that.
Even if it's not consent?
Yeah, you just put on the agenda, absolutely, the action items will be A, B, C, D, E. You can certainly do that.
Okay. You can chomp them?
Yeah, you can, you can put them in, I can, you can do consent, you can do action items. The whole thing is just public notice, it's gotta be a publicly noticed meeting. That's the only limitation that you have.
Dr. Holmes?
I am not prepared to move to one work session, this is stuff we've talked about before. You all say you don't operate after 10. Why are we making this decision right now, when we haven't effectively discussed it as a board? I'm not prepared, I, I mean, I, I can tell you that I think we have too much work ahead of us. I think there's a lot of board work that has been missed, that's been emailed, and not gotten on the agenda, there's not a clear process of what's going on the agenda when suggestions are sent to you from, not you, the chair, from board directors. And that's the process that I think Caroline was speaking to before, in terms of, it's not clear on how it's getting there. So I don't want to, I'm, I'm, if you're asking now, I'm a thumbs down. We are not in a spot with each other, with our business of this district, stability-wise. We don't have community support and trust where we should, in my opinion, to show meetings.
Okay.
I would just offer, I would just offer, just because we meet twice a month, doesn't mean we're doing the business of the board. I, I, I would say, I would, and I've been pretty clear with, with how I've experienced this before. I would say, let's try it. Let's try it in January, from January to Janu-, or from July to January, and see how it goes. Let's see what it would feel like if we did a three-hour robust study session, and how that would or would not impact the efficiency of our board meetings. I mean, this isn't working, so.
A lot of reasons.
So we would have a listening session, and then a three-hour robust study session, and then we would have a business meeting.
At a different night.
At a different night, yep.
Constantly.
Okay, so, could we have a four-hour work session? And then a listening session and a.
Board meeting.
I mean, could we get really in-depth then, or just really? We're not, we're not gonna be able to solve this tonight, because it's after 10, and we're not thinking as well. But, I mean, that's a.
I also think I heard, in believing that, this chart that we're gonna try with all the things, we're, we'll be able to kind of do some of that in ten, as we move forward toward new things. And I think, for me, that's important, because I don't understand, I mean, I just see bullet points, but I don't understand how, what's, what's the case, what's the data? And I don't know that. And so, I, that, to me, goes to the amount of work that has to be done. And then, then I think it's reasonable to talk about, that, with that context, what con, you know, what would we do, three-hour meetings and a business meeting and a work session? It makes more sense than in the abstract, just saying, let's just do it, whatever. Anytime you add one new board member to a group, it's a new group. And we just got through having a new, a new group. You know, and it's a new group, and it's a new group, and I think it's time to just, you know, we gotta walk before we can run. This group needs to walk.
Okay.
I'll also add, though, that having a new group actually gives us the opportunity to try new things.
That's why we're gonna do it.
Advance.
We're gonna do it.
In the direction of.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna start the new already.
Okay, and so, can you try new things? How do you feel about using that for the agenda, instead of the agenda that we're running? Maybe this is not the first time we've seen it, or you've seen it all other times?
Wait, can I just practice something? We solved the other question too, you were asking about, about the.
The board reports will be two minutes.
Okay, but they're gonna be in-person and not in writing?
In-person and vocal for now, but not more than two minutes. So, yeah.
Okay, we solved that one. So now we're on.
But then, well.
The agenda stays.
Right, it's, it's, I mean, the same work gets accomplished, it's just slightly different nomenclature, and it makes, it makes sense.
Are you done at goal three now?
What? We don't know what.
Yes. Goal three is the heading on.
Goal three.
What's the benefit of the change nomenclature?
Um, it is, it's, it's the consent agenda, then, I mean, that's just a fast item. We've got personnel always, if it's needed. I like the notion of unfinished, unfinished into new business. There's always policy. I, I don't understand, I haven't understood, our current agendas with the, where the action is. To me, this is more clean, we always know, with unfinished business, that potentially has action items to it, most often new business doesn't, policy does.
It's not incredibly different, but right now, we're mixing the action, non-action item all through the agenda, and this is just cleaner and clearer.
Right, that to me, because I'm just, based on what you've just said, Carrie, so are you saying, where, where does the, where does the action items come? That's my question, because I, I'm not getting it from this.
Might be under personnel, there might be something under unfinished, there might be something under policy.
Action items could show up anywhere.
Could show up anywhere, yep.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yep.
Anyone else come with thumbs up you got for it?
Okay, how many thumbs up do I have for this? One, two, three, four, five, do you have a thumb?
Nope.
She has no thumbs.
Okay, we have, we have majority. Okay, and the study session, the same idea, welcome vocal, give the purpose of the agenda, and it's gonna be one of those five things. It'll be governance, operational, board governance, superintendent relations, public engagement, information. That's what the topics will come, whatever business we have, will come under some, one of those topics. Give me a thumb. One, two, three, e.
No? I, 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 I think that, you know, I'm, I'm somewhat neutral in work, or don't, I, I really, I don't know. I don't think.
They organize.
I don't see the benefit, quite.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I'll see.
We have a score.
The benefit of the doubt.
We have a score. We have a score. Okay.
So, what we are working toward, are changing this, working on the board planning document between now and the time this change takes place, and this change takes place July 1.
I have a question, back to the work session agenda, what, what, can you explain the superintendent relations, public engagement, information items?
So this doesn't make as much sense, because you don't have the board document in front of you, but, so you look at the superintendent relations, so, that's, so, one of the agenda topics would always be one-on-one or some kind of meetings, when would, when, what's the timeline for the appraisal? So you know that that's one of the requirements. Again, if you're hiring somebody, that could end up being, you know, part of the calendar as well. It's just thinking of, of one of those predictable things in each of these categories that is really the work of the board. And so, in my experience, what's happened when you have this is, some of the contentious, agenda planning doesn't happen, because there's a predictable cadence here. So the topics are here, and they come up, so there aren't, like, like, it's, it's a new experience for me to have these things bubble up that the board members want to talk about, because it doesn't always fit into one of these areas. So, just what my experience was, it's a format that works, but I don't think, if you don't see the board agenda, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
My favorite timekeeper has told us we are 60 minutes over for this topic, just so that you know. Dr. Bassett, your news up.
So, a question I have is, where does acad, you know, where do academics come in?
Operational oversight, that's what the strategic plan. That's, well, it's, it's not just, it's not just academics, it's the operational oversight, it's all of the strategic plan, budget stuff.
So that's where those things.
Yep, all of those things.
Okay. We have finished the discussion for letter A. Everybody agree with that?
Um, hmm, what did you say? I mean, this doesn't say A, did you say?
On the agenda.
A.
Oh, on that.
Okay, so moving on to B. First, from the adult safety and security movie committee, salad movie as a community. If you're a critical incident communication special, which is approved March 25.
All right, I'm gonna try to do this as quickly as we can, past.
Shall we have a one paper?
Four, I'm all in paper.
You see this, and as we're handing out, I just want to give a little context. I, I know there were concerns about me not doing what I was supposed to do aligned to this. And, and I've had concerns since the first time I read that, that there, um, I had legal concerns since the first time I read it, so I have it then. And so, again, it's taken us a while to get this on the agenda, but we're here tonight to talk about it.
Incidentally, the first time I saw this, I immediately raised concerns with Liz Viera, and she and I shared that we both had concerns about it. The, I gave you a memo, so that you will have the applicator read through my thoughts on this, but, the short of it is that this protocol, is how I'm gonna refer to it, requires the superintendent or designated, what we refer to as the administration, to report anytime there's a level three or level four behavior, and some additional behaviors. Those level three behaviors, a lot of those are pretty mundane behaviors, they're like bullying, fighting, tampering with the fire system, hazing, you know, things that are run-of-the-mill at any school. And then, there are some that have some pretty sensitive information, when we talk about, forget, sexually inappropriate behaviors, extortion, robbery, poison, that nature. Level four behaviors, it also requires you to report those, those are a little bit more serious, artisan assault, possession or use of a dangerous weapon, other than firearm, possession of a firearm, sexual assault, et cetera. And in addition, protocol requires the superintendent to notify the board by email if there's a staff member who's injured by a student or visitor who's injured by a student, or if a staff member uses R.CAN on a student. And the protocol specifically requires that you identify the district building, the specific incident that's been reported, and whether the police were notified, and then the applicant out a detailed report within five days, five days after the investigation is completed. So, if you get down to the nitty-gritty on the bottom of page two, the, the main legal issue that this raises is that it's going to result in violations of the Minnesota Data Practices Act, and the Madison Educational Rights Practice Act, or FERPA. Because the, the district has to identify the building, describe a specific incident, and provide a detailed report. Even if the administration tries to take out personal identifiers and names, board members are gonna know, in a number of cases, who these kids and staff members are. And FERPA doesn't allow for that. FERPA, when we're talking about education records, allows school officials who have a legitimate educational interest to access education records and the data derived from those. But board members probably don't meet either of those criteria broadly. And the FERPA goes on, it's saying you have to use a reasonable method to ensure school officials obtain access to only those records they have legitimate educational interest in. But court's gonna say, in my opinion, that board members don't have a legitimate educational interest in accessing that kind of identifiable information, unless you're considering a student expulsion or some type of a lawsuit. Minnesota law is even more restrictive. The Minnesota Government Data Practices Act has one of those to a need-to-know standard. And under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, it specifically says, "Access to private data shall be available only to individuals within the entity whose work assignments reasonably require access." So when you look at that, what does that mean for a board member? That means, does a board member need to know the information to fulfill its role as a body? Not individually, but as a body. So when you fulfill your role as a body, when you're voting on things? When there's a student expulsion, when there's a grievance filed by an employee that comes to the board, or when there's a lawsuit. Other than that, the nitty-gritty information, you don't have a right or a need-to-know that information. And so, it raises serious concerns, because the protocol, as I mentioned, some of this is pretty sensitive information. Using R.CAN on a student, you're gonna know, that information's gotta filter back, board members are gonna find out about it. When a staff member's injured, that's confidential medical data under federal law. You're gonna have access to that, you have no right to have access to that kind of information. So, the concern that arises is, under the Data Practices Act, you can be sued for violating the South Washington County School District. I represent that district, and one of the reasons why they switched to me as counsel is they had some bad advice on what the superintendent could say, this is almost 30 years ago now, in the Navarre case. The superintendent went so far as to say allegations against an employee, a teacher, were serious. That's what he said. And a jury awarded $500,000 to the teacher for saying the allegations are serious. You're talking about sharing information that's far more sensitive than that. I mean, you don't want to be staring down the barrel of a lawsuit for somebody you don't need to, to do. So, it's just not the type of data that board members have a right to know or need to know. That's the, the, the. The second issue is, we talked about, board members are really in charge of governance, not management, and that just underscores the fact that, again, there's not a need to know the information. The third concern I have is that this information can come before or later in time. Let's talk about student dispenishing, and you may have a student expulsion. Someone can then say, well, now. Someone can then say, well, now you're biased, because you got the information ahead of time, you're talking about the information ahead of time. So now you're not in a unbiased decision here. Same thing when it comes to grievances. And there are times when the board acts in a closeted judicial manner. I mean, you're the decision maker, so we want to make sure that that's not coming through. There are also practical issues. You know, I think the concept, whoever put this together had some great plots, some great ideas, but that, in practice, it's really hard to follow this document, and it imposes what is truly an unusual burden. I don't know of any district in the state, I've never been to a district that has something like this. So, again, there might be one out there, but I don't know, it's a very extraordinary document. I'm not suggesting, by the way, that the board should be blindsided by information there, and I'm not suggesting that the board didn't have a need-to-know about truly critical events. You have someone who was in possession of a firearm at school, like, there's something under the law that's called a health and safety emergency that allows the superintendent to share information, so you don't get blindsided until parents get to know, and can be reassured, hey, there was a firearm found on school property. But, yeah, certainly don't want you blindsided. And I also don't need to suggest that you shouldn't have access to important data. You know, when we think about summary data, in cases I've been involved in, even with the Office for Civil Rights, they want to know what number of kids, what number of suspensions for this type of conduct, and you get that summary data, and maybe you review it in whatever, I don't know, if you think a corporate, quarterly, or yearly, because then you can tell whether your policies are effective and whether they're being implemented as instructed. But the day-to-day stuff doesn't help you with any of that, it doesn't help with policy governance. So, my recommendation is to rescind this, because it puts the superintendent in the untenable position of essentially being compelled to violate the law or to not follow through what she wants, and it puts you in the position of accessing data that you don't have a legal right or need to access. So, that's the short of it. My recommendation is to rescind the approval of that particular requirement on critical incident communications.
Dr. Long, you sign your hand up?
Yeah, so, I did a lot of calling around other school board members in other districts, asking them about this such thing. They said, well, why wouldn't your school board want to know that? And they told me information that they get from theirs. So, I guess I'm questioning them, and they're like, well, the community would want you to know that, why wouldn't you? So, I guess that'll be a big thing for us. I mean, I think this is information that, that we should know. They said they were even allowed to ask questions about it, if they had it. They would get reports.
Can you tell me, can you share with me what board has a protocol of this effect?
The.
Because, because asking why we really want to know is not what we're saying.
The main city, the ring of suburbs, I called multiple, multiple. I spent days talking to people.
I represent a bunch of them, so if you can let me know, I can follow along, I'm happy to do that. I mean, if they're, I'm just offering to do that, to pull back anything that's written writing that they have, so if there are names in specific, it would help, that would be appreciated for me.
I have a huge problem too with how we're choosing to do this instead of us sitting here as school board members and discussing it, and what we think is right for our district, and what we know that community has said to us.
Well, what we think and what the law is, we have to follow the law. Dr. Holmes, did you have your hand up?
I did. So, the, our Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee, Carolyn and I, and Renee was there for a while, we put a lot of work into this, and it stems from how often we've been in the news. Carrie Levin did a report on the increase of weapons, firearms, in districts. You know who was at the top? Us, we were up there, and I have yet to see, and I, the information is not flowing. And so, if there is something that you can edit, or that we are allowed to have, if we strike building, if, whatever needs to be done to make it more generic, that would be beneficial, but the purpose of it was to track what we are doing to change behaviors. You know, we, we, I think, was it EduClimber that was supposed to be tracking patterns and changing, like, we keep allocating all of this money to behavior supports and, you know, supporting unruly behavior, or whatever word, I'm sure I'm going to use the wrong one when people get upset. So, we could support the students in changing behavior, or allowing the classroom, you know, to, instead of vacating, we can continue the education. So, it's an accountability piece, because you, whether we get it or not, it comes to us at listening hour, it comes to us in our emails, and how do we have a tool that tracks that we're doing what we say we're doing? In regards to the student handbook, in regards to programs that we're committing to, and beyond this, once we created it, oh, by the way, we created a level five, guys, so we don't even max out at four, we created a level five of behaviors, and that was never discussed. It just happened after this document, and so there's so much work that should be done, and it, it pulls into the confusion of when the board was approving the handbook and now suddenly we're not. And so, I guess my question would be, what is the board's or board members' liability if these violent behaviors are continued unfettered? We hit the news all the time, and nothing, you know, I mean, it's, it's an accountability piece. It's nothing new, this is something we all talked about as a board when your Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee was committed, created, and we wanted to find a way to make some inroads in those areas, those avenues.
I think that those are very quoting comments, and I would say.
Very what comments?
Quoting, very persuasive comments, and what I would say is that, I think you can get summary data, number of incidents, and again, certainly, you can have a system in place so you're not blindsided and don't hear about things for the first time in the news. You know, there's a firearm that's in your, found in your school, how are we going to get that information out? There's, but it's the detailed report that creates the problem, it's the ability to track that back and identify folks.
And that, that's very helpful and understandable. So, I, I think edits, but I think this needs to stay on the board's radar in some form that is legally acceptable because of what we've witnessed, what we've dealt with.
And I'd be happy to draft something that makes it a summary data, so that you can do that.
And maybe that's something we can take up, because like I said, we've changed to level five now, so this whole format would essentially change. And the discussion there that you weren't privy to is, it wasn't the monotony of the day-to-day incidents, and that was communicated, communicated quite clearly when we drafted this. We must have gone three or four rounds. So, if we can tighten it up language-wise, I think we're after the same thing that you were saying. It just didn't come to fruition the way it legally should have.
Dr. Holmes, so when you're looking at things like bullying and fighting, are you looking at the number of incidents? What, what is the data that helps you take that next step and make decisions?
You know, it's, it's, it's pattern behavior, because again, I mentioned it up at the board table this evening. When we are, when, when decisions are being made at the school level, and we are, say, let's do BAR, for example, it's a program we're being asked to, you know, that's going to go district-wide, and it requires more financial dollars. I want to know if it's working or if it's time to adjust course. And there's so much flexibility from school to school to school, I don't want to jump from shiny object to shiny object. So, it's, I, I don't know how to explain that to you right now, it's accountability, it's, it's, we talk about, you know, reducing suspensions and not addressing disruptive behavior, like, I, I don't know how to do this right now.
At what interval would you need the data, like, because I, I mentioned again, you shouldn't be blindsided, so big events, we can talk about how we're getting notification for that, but at what intervals would you need the data? Because obviously, we don't make decisions based on day-to-day data, we don't make decisions based on month-to-month data, you know, usually it's quarterly, yearly type of data. What's the interval you think that would be?
You know, well, I guess when they're major events, I, I think that should happen the day, or not the day, but soon after that event. A firearm in our school is a big thing, a machete in our school is a big thing. That, that does require board notification and my.
Yeah, I'd agree on the firearm, something like that, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and then.
But that's not for data tracking as much as it is the immediacy of the notification is, so you're not blindsided.
Well, I beg to differ, because again, you're, like, we had quite a lot of conversations around what was being given in terms of the disruptions that were occurring from school to school. So, I, if you would like me to collect my thoughts and get them back to you, or get them back to the board, I can sure as heck do that, but I don't want to dismiss the amount of work and conversations that we've had before if you're asking me to recount them right here on the spot. So, if that's the expectation, then I can come back with that information, but this is a problem that this board was aware of, that's why we created the Safety and Security Ad hoc Committee. There was a goal for this.
I think, obviously, well intentioned, my concern is the legal aspect of it, and so, I ask that the board rescind that, and that we work, and I'm happy to work with you if you give me a permission, and I'm happy to put it in a summary format, in terms of data that the administration can share without putting the board and the administration jeopardy. That's what my request is.
I think that's a good idea.
If we can.
Actually, he asked my question. As a healthcare worker, I know that some of this information can be very sensitive, and eventually, school administration does send out generic emails explaining what happened, and some of that information. Is that too late for us as board members to find out? Or is that just the right timing to allow the correct information to get out to the public and us as board members? Right, and I think that would be the question that I would ask.
And it'll be interesting, as you're on the board, you know, and it's, it's a great question, because that's our current practice right now, is any time a notification goes off, that would, an incident would happen in a school that would warrant a communication to staff and families, it always goes to the board. That's, that's the consistency that we've done with that piece of it.
Yeah, so then, I guess, the question to ask as board members is, with the timing, like, as I was saying, how much information is too much? Because if you get it weekly, what can we do about it? Right, we are not going to be able to change the administrative practices that support what is happening in the schools. We are being formed one way or the other. So, do we need to get this, you know, on a quarterly basis, annually?
And that's been, that's been part of my question with this too, is it, it goes a little bit back to roles, is it management or is it governance?
Right.
And, and sharing the summary data, whether it's academic data, whether it's discipline data, whether it's, you know, regardless of what it is, that's, that's my job, is to make sure that through that oversight of operations, you're getting that, right? The how, that, that's the concern for me, is that an ad hoc committee got into, if you got into the how of it. That, that's my question and concern with it.
Okay, before, on Dr. Bowman and then Dr. Lumbren, is there, can we just go to, yes, rescind it and rework it?
I think.
If we commit to a timeframe, can we? Okay, we send, no?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, my comment to Dr. Stallow's comment is, the words that have been used here today, I'm really concerned that, again, we're blurring the authorities and the roles between the board and the administration. What do we need to know? I mean, it would be customary that the office of the superintendent collect all that information, all the data around it, and, and is it the board's responsibility to say to the superintendent, something's burning, something's burning, when in reality, it's the superintendent who does collect all that information all the time from all the buildings? And that's kind of what I'm concerned about. We don't want to be driving the superintendent, we want the superintendent to be driving our, the information that we get with real-life data, and that's my concern, because too much of this, like, to say, what are we doing to change behaviors? Again, that is a, that is a, a role of the administrative, I was going to say administrative for staffing, but it comes with the administration. And, and, you know, quite frankly, the superintendent has the tools to do these things, and, and the ad hoc committee was formed when there was an absolute vacuum of information coming from the administrative office. And now we have a whole different scenario here, when we actually have a responsive superintendent that I think can work with us to better report, because we, as school board members, have never defined what sort of reports do we want? And then we have an attorney that says, well, you can ask for that, or you can't ask for this, or whatever, however it breaks out, but let's then define the report, but it belongs to Terry, belongs to Dr. Stallow and the administration. So, as long as we can be clear on all the roles and the responsibilities, that's what's important to me, so.
Okay. Dr. Lumbren, did you have something?
No, no, I just think it was addressed, it's about the data in aggregate as opposed to individual, because we shouldn't, you're right, we shouldn't have that data in aggregate, we should understand what's playing into it.
Right. We shouldn't be micromanaging it.
Okay, so to rescind it and rework it.
What about the timelines?
What would be an acceptable timeline for you?
Like tomorrow? No. I'm serious, this is. I'm serious, it's also a point of me, so I don't, what timeline are you under?
How soon can you get the information?
Soon as you want.
I mean, the board is not going to consider until their next meeting, so we're going to have, you and I can work to have something, and I'm going to work through Terry, to Dr. Stallow, to make sure that she's in that loop as the management piece, and I'll commit to doing whatever effort I need to do to get it done for the next meeting.
Great, if you can include Caroline on there, because she was on the ad hoc with me through all of this.
And what would be helpful is really thinking about, for me, because again, still drafting, working on, trying to land for April, the balance scorecard, which, which to me is going to be, what are those metrics that, again, you're seeing every January progress where we have interim data? This would be an example of that, we would have it, and then end of the year, you're also seeing some data. So, it'd be helpful, as we're building that, to think, what, what are, what are some of those measures that really matter to the board as you think about some of the behavior and the safety things?
And just off the top of my head, one of the things, EduClimber, we were, we talked about it as a board, and there was going to be a board dashboard, so we could see some of this. I don't know if that came to fruition at all, so, I know you're not going to answer that right now, I'm just saying, this is one of those things where we did talk as a board, and so, I don't.
Well, think about those metrics, because that, that would help, just like, just like, and again, we're not there, right? It's been eight months, but building that cadence of saying, all right, around academics, we've always got proficiency growth and gap closing measures. So, what are we seeing mid-year, what are we seeing at the end of the year? So, you can look at that, which then helps you to say, well, wait a minute, Terry, you said the priorities for next year are working, implementing X, Y, and Z, so what's the data? How are we going to show that that's helping you get improvements? And again, that's the system we're continuing to build as we're, as we're applying.
Okay, but we have thumbs up all the way around. Did you have them?
I don't have any thumbs.
Okay, I'm going to do a thumb. Rescind everyone.
Well, I have only, with the proviso, I actually have my hand up. I, I really think it is important for whoever, we tend, and with.
Me.
Mr. Wolf.
And me.
And, and, just to, it's your name yet, yes, you two, with the two of them, I think that's really important, because I think the fine, all of that information that they went through, and all of the stuff that's in that document, has, because what's important to me is the legal aspects of it. And so, and you know those things, that we need those pitfalls, and I think being able to cut out those pitfalls while at the same time hearing what you're, you know, kind of hear where they're coming from would be really useful, and I think that I'm fine with it. It's doing that work.
Let's move on. All right, Thursday. All right, Thursday. Discussion regarding Financial Advisory Council. Taking away a question.
Thank you. So it has come, and it's actually been a conversation with the Finance Advisory Council since I have started about, honestly, we are not... She has one already called, sorry. The district's action plan, which is in the packet that's being presented. You also, there were minutes that were included that Finance Advisory Council wanted you to know. So you have why the plan was created or why the council was created by the board and then the bylaws that the board adopted. And quite honestly, we're not following that right now at all. So I think, well, the conversation at the Finance Advisory Council was, does the board still support the bylaws? Because that drives the work or honestly, probably disbands the committee.
Just a question. Because not too long ago, I attended the Minneapolis Finance Committee meeting. The only members of Finance Committee are board members. There's no members of community. Is that common practice? What is the common practice or...
I mean, you've worked 27, right?
Can I field this one real quick? Let me carry... Just a quick historical. The Finance Committee, along with the Legislative Action Committee, was born in this district about 25 years ago. And the gap that the community identified at that time was there was very little normal citizen, resident, whatever involvement in the processes. And the district didn't have anything. So what they did was a finance committee was formed to really engage the residents in the discussion about the finance. And so run by the...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I was just curious after noting that, what common practice is or what?
Right. I mean, that was always the purpose. And you're right to ask, is it still there?
Purposes. Because after that disbanded or whatever happened to it, I don't know.
It didn't disband.
But so later then, about 2009, eight or nine, the board established another Finance Advisory Council. So from that iteration, I don't know. I think that might have been when they had a finance council. My husband was actually... My husband was on that committee. I think that was that old life. But so there've been a couple of iterations. And this is the last one standing. And it was for a specific purpose with selling property and all those kinds of things and worked really, really well and helped this district a lot. It has drifted. And, you know, I think it's time to look at this. And quite frankly, I would also say, one of the things that I wondered about is if we had, if there's some places that the board could look at some of the processes and things we need to be doing in terms of monitoring, what could we have helped at all? Or what should we have known in the whole thing? And so I'm saying that imperfectly because I'm tired. But I still think there's a need for it. If this matches that need, I can't, I won't sit here tonight and say, I think it does. You know, but I think having it on the agenda for us to reflect on is a good thing. And I think we need to sit with it a little bit and think about it. Quite frankly, I don't think tonight's night can decide to do anything.
I just, I get an answer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, okay. No, that wasn't, no, no, you asked him one that there was your answer. You got part one and part two.
My question was, what is the common practice in other districts?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Remember, I did calling around.
Yes, yes.
I asked about this too.
Okay, thank you.
I asked him about this too. So I've heard from the other districts that, all surrounding us, that they have a financial committee and it's three school board members that are on that committee along with, you know, other people. And they sit down and they like really go through the budgets. And then they, those three school board members, it's like, kind of like how the ad hoc committee, then they bring those reports back to the board for discussion.
And our bylaws technically, it's just one school board member, which is the treasurer. And I was reading that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, in transparency, we had this conversation during...
I was accustomed to exactly what you were talking about where there were three board members and then community members. So I mistakenly assumed that. So that was totally on me, I think, with...
But it was also discussion too that we have as this team where we all said we wanted to be there.
Well, anyway, that's, because that's what I'm accustomed to. And I know the purposes, both in Oseo and in prior, like when I was there, that group was pretty, the Oseo one especially, really robust in terms of they had a schedule of the cycle of the budget and they had a schedule of what that group met. And I'm sure it's all online probably, but really, well done. You led them, you led them.
And there's multiple advantages. The reality is, honestly, part of it is dependent upon the personality of your board. And the reason why I say that is if, and kind of how the wheels have fallen off, if it gets to a point where the board needs the information before the council or the Finance Advisory Committee, there's no point in having the committees. The board's already got the information. Or if you have multiple board members sitting on the committee and you're just re-presenting all of the information to the full board, now you're just wasting board members' time, double doing. So it really does come down to what is, what does the board, what does this board, how do they want any piece of the budget, budget process, whatever, to roll through? My one request has always been, only, I don't want to make budget assumptions in a silo. I am one person and I am in no position to say, I believe the state is going to give us 2%. I believe they're going to increase TRA. I believe that is not advantageous for me, for the district or the community. So whatever form that is, if it's three board members, if it's three board members in a committee, if it's just a committee with one, my only ask is do not put me in a position where I am the one making your budget assumptions. That's all I ask.
And just for notes for everybody, that even the members of the committee, public, from the public also expressed that they didn't feel like it was a very valuable use of their time right now, the way that it was structured.
Not the way that it's being run.
The way, yes, the way...
Because the structure technically should follow the bylaws. We're just not...
The way it's currently is.
Yes.
So if you were to make a recommend date, what would you recommend?
I recommend you set on what the board is comfortable with and that's how we move forward. I do not recommend operating under bylaws that we're not following. So either you review the bylaws, we come back at the next meeting and you say, yep, reviewed, makes sense. No, it doesn't. Because that truly drives the participation and the interest in the committee.
Good, so we can review this.
Review the bylaws and decide what makes sense.
Long, she got me that time. Are there specifics that we're not following?
Everything.
Everything.
Welcome to every day. Yes, no, I mean, in all honesty, see, the biggest challenge is somewhere along the way, it started, it became where the information is presented to the board before it's presented. Before it's presented or discussed at the Finance Advisory. Well, they can sit in a board meeting and get the same information. There's no need to go to an independent meeting to hear and then have no vested interest in troubleshooting, problem-solving, providing feedback, providing direction, like...
Well, and I guess that's why I'm asking because I know that in various times, we've all expressed, like, why are we not hearing from them earlier? And I looked back and I looked at all of their reports and they're consistent. We need to be in front of the board. So that's kind of one of the dots we're trying to...
Correct.
Correct. So timing.
Well, and it's not...
Representation.
Yes. And I, the honest response that was given to me in my tenure here thus far is that somewhere along the way, it pivoted because the board wanted the information first. They don't want the Finance Advisory Committee to have information that they all don't have. And it can't work that way. It's either that committee is working to do the information or the board is, or configured. But you can't be like, it's always got to be in front of the board first. They have all information or, you know, if I were to come to you, as a, for example, and say, I've met with the committee two months ago and we made estimates on enrollment, making it up, right, whatever. And then I come to the board and you're like, wait a minute, we heard two months ago this was that committee, why is the first the board is hearing about it? It's impossible to have the committee doing their work in advance of the board, on behalf of the board, and then have it turn around and be like, but the board didn't get the information? No, of course not. Because the design of the committee is that they're the ones...
So is that why, in your experience and what you called around, you have three board members, it's like an ad hoc committees, and then they come and it would fall into when they report to the board? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I don't know that. I think just because, at least in my experience, it was a board committee and there's always three, there were just...
And then are there citizens on also or just three?
No, citizens as well.
So I love the idea of a Financial Advisory Committee because you are your own animal. You really are. And I also appreciate the board wanting to be involved in it. I am not one that would be on that. I think the expertise that citizens bring who have, you know, their careers and their stakes in it is invaluable. I would like to...
It's free.
Yeah. Timing's going to be a huge one for me. And then how it falls into the calendar. Because I don't want to be getting things last minute. But if somebody comes to me and says the Financial Advisory Committee is saying X, Y, and Z, then it's on my radar. Does that make sense?
Yeah, they want to be relevant.
So I love the Financial Advisory Committee. I think it's underutilized. And I think personality of the board, we probably are going to have to move to more than just one individual, just based on how we operate and how we can get information.
And I actually don't mind being off the board. I'll just sit in the audience. I just want to observe.
Maybe not off the board.
I mean, not off the board, yeah. I'll be out of the committee if it's a problem, I don't care. But I'm going to sit in on those meetings. And that's something that we've already, I mean, I obviously, as an observer, will be involved in discussion, but I'm an observer. I ain't...
What do we need right now?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what the bylaws say.
That's what the bylaws say. What I would anticipate is, I mean, you guys have experienced, and granted, we've been chasing, admittedly chasing this year with all things budget. I don't know that I'd meter it that way, to be honest with you. I think there's a lot of heavy lifting that comes in the fall as you're preparing for the next year's budget. Even the revised, you're getting audit data, you're working on a revised budget, you're working on the following years. I think there's a lot of heavy lifting that probably could happen up until January. Then, once it kind of gets released to the board as far as decision-making and budget and da-da-da, then they might honestly kind of take a hiatus for a little while because their work is sort of done and it's handed out to the board. I mean, so I don't know that I'd meter it that way, is my point.
And then as we're going through this, now that there are vacancies and then upcoming vacancies...
I was going to say, we do have a board member or we do have a member of this that has not honestly shown up for two years. So I think that we, I think we have at least two seats open plus whatever pops open in June.
And I think what would strengthen for me, what we learned through this last process is hammering out what that interview process or what the information submission for candidates is and how it gets to the board before we appoint members.
And just to be clear, this is a board, this is a board committee. So unless you want me involved with the application prop, that would need to change. Otherwise, I'm hands off.
Yeah.
And I am merely...
Well, I guess that's why, then I'll talk to everybody because when we went through this, Caroline and one of our now seated members had some really productive conversation about what was missing in the application process and how the information got to us as board directors. So it was pretty, and I asked, actually asked her to send her listening, because she came and spoke at listening hour two. And so I reached out and said, can you submit those comments? And so, I mean, it's really good stuff for us to work through and think about.
I would be interested in how, what your role has been before because, again, the two districts that I've been pretty intimately involved with the Finance Advisory Council, it really has been led by, it's been led by the finance person.
And that's what I'm used to, but that's not what the bylaws read.
Yeah.
That's my point. I mean, you are our expert in finance. I would hope so, yes. That's my belief as well, yes.
So if one would be, if when we are reviewing the bylaws and deciding what makes sense, if we decide what makes sense is that you get to determine the skills?
Criteria?
I think we can languish that into...
Yeah, that's so...
Ron's going to have files to be able to do that.
I was going to ask, could we get recommendations from you that we could look at as we're looking through bylaws?
Of course, of course. Happy to do that.
Dr. Bassett?
Well, I'm glad we're doing this. I think recommendations from you are going to be really, really good, Kristin, to get those recommendations. And I think that board members need to sit with the document for a while, you know. And it's not about personality and because it's been the treasurer's role, that's also been a point of contention. I won't say contention, but it's like, people feel like they can't say anything about the finances if the treasurer didn't say it. That's the climate that has been around here for a little minute. And I had no idea that the person's been missing for a year or two, or a lot of the person's been gone, I had no idea because we never came back to the board. So I just think this is an idea that we're looking at it. Thank you, Kristin, for taking some lead and, you know, being willing to kind of help us with it. And I think you can sit with it and come up with some recommendations. So thank you, Caroline, for doing some research and finding out what others are doing.
And alls I'd ask is that there is a decision made before the end of the fiscal year. Because right now, the Advisory Council, like, we're in policy work now, right? Like, that got sent and we can carry on. And again, back to the timing of all things budget. But we're going to hit June and we're going to start talking about levy again, right? Like, it's going to start. We're going to be looking at 10-year LTFM plans and all the things and away we go. And so we have a few months, but I don't want to wait too long because then now we're behind on that committee work again.
I agree. And I would just say too, I think that whenever we get to the place where we, if we are recruiting, I think that the caliber of the people that we're recruiting will reflect how we push it out. Because if the word in the street is that, well, they don't really do anything, they don't have anything to do, so why, oh? Because they said that to me too, you know, so that'll make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we look forward to hearing from your, giving your input on it all. And we'll go to work on it. All right, the very last thing on our agenda is what was quoted on the last meeting to have a brief discussion on policy 54. And that policy is internet technology and cell phone acceptable use and safe. So does anyone have any things they want to discuss about that?
Yes. Brad, you reminded, I have some things too.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, you too. Not on the procedures, it's just policy. So we understand.
Okay.
When you're ready. Again, I know they hold us... The gist of mine is, I don't think the board has given this policy the discussion that it deserves in terms of things we want.
in terms of things we want to make sure are incorporated. So procedures are effective and convey the role of the board. Specifically, the feedback of all of the stakeholders that this impacts. And I say that because we started talking about policies that come forward, ones that are controversial, that's how we've been labeling them. So I'm gonna label it instead of controversial, more discussion, just in terms of our role with the community and how it's gonna impact students and the feedback and making sure it's all there. And the ones I was looking at, St. Paul did, I think most of the districts, in all honesty, have been doing multiple meetings and conversations around this policy. And even are incorporating some of the language, what it means to be a digital citizen, that learning component that Caroline talks about, and how it relates to this policy. Sorry, I'm just getting to this. So I wanna talk a little bit more detail about how it came. And I think I touched on it before. So it started becoming an issue out, we obviously all know that cell phones are a distraction and screens are a problem and can hinder class focus. And we had staff starting to come and speak to that. And a policy, it didn't do any, I don't know what was in place and how it was around it. Maybe you do, if it was just generic. But what happened is we didn't put a policy, I don't, again, I don't know if one was in, but it wasn't sufficient. So then administrators and learning leaders got together and created some administrative procedures. And that was, gosh, it must have been over the summer of '23?
Sure, yeah.
Ish, and rolled it out. And there was some pushback that year, and I don't know if you all recall, we had some listening hours, why did you do this in a policy? The board, blah, 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 and that's why it hit our radar.
Oh, so.
We never really focused on it, never really had a work session on it after that. And then the legislation came out with the deadline for it and the statute, cellphone policy. I think by March 15th, 2025, that's what it says, that's all it said. The school district or charter school must adopt a policy on students' possession and use of cell phones in school by March 15th, 2025. That's the statute. There's been back and forth, and I know it was mentioned in one of our first, or the first policy meetings I attended, that there was discussion about potentially banning cell phones. So I found some NPR articles on that, and that's not solidified. They're still going back and forth themselves. So I just wanna have this policy make sense to us. And I think we could strengthen the language in it. So we've had all kinds of information and I just, it's all been covered to us. There was a cellphone toolkit that came out. I think we all got it in our email. And then Director Bassett, you passed on some information from MSBA and who's doing what. And I get the gist of it, what we're doing in terms of the different grade or the different, you know, secondary versus elementary. That's all there, I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. Completely gone for elementary and then away for the day. So that's, I just, the learning component is missing and I think it needs to be in the policy language itself. Hope that just made sense.
So what are administrators or teachers or parents giving for feedback to use superintendent style of policy? Are you hearing?
Nothing. When was this policy passed? I didn't hear that.
November of 2024.
So it's, it's already been passed recently? It's not like a whole policy?
It was passed.
It was June 2024, revised in November.
So the language was updated and then it was passed. We had a bunch of policies coming through at that time. So it was lumped together, no discussion. And it just, the memo under it, or I guess the quantitative language around it was legislative updates. And so it passed with no discussion. And in terms of what people are saying, we've never really given them the opportunity to address what they wanna see in a policy, what are their expectations? There are safety and security concerns here. There are concerns about, I know we have the pushout that if you need to get in touch with your child, you know, you reach out to the office. And I've also heard that it's really hard to get in touch with the front office. So there are all just a wealth of things out there that I think requires a full topic like this. And it's not tonight because you all just wanted to hear why I was bringing it here. I think we need to give it a little bit more attention. Director Holmes.
And I would agree, after looking at, you know, some of the other districts, there's kind of cellphone policies, and also listening to the lawyer at MSBA, which I had shared during my board report and some of the things that they are suggesting. I, you know, we really need to look at our students as this is their digital literacy. And what are we teaching them about that, right? And that needs to be included in that, in the policy. There isn't anything in there about that. And not just for this policy, I've said this before, for all of our policies, there should be something that, what are we teaching our kids? Because really, we're teaching them how to be citizens in our community and in our larger society. And that should also be addressed in there.
Okay.
But, because there should be times when, especially for high school students, that electronic devices should be used. That's something that I teach my students all the time. I teach them, when we do math, we don't just do that computation in our bed. That's what our phone is for. We use it, you know, when we're listening to a book, we're gonna listen to it on our phone. Let's, let's, this tool is magical, you know? Like, right now, I've been using it to be the timekeeper this whole meeting. You know, am I using it appropriately? No, I'm not checking messages, I'm not texting people. But I'm using my digital literacy skills to use it in an appropriate manner. Like, why can't our policy also address some of that?
In the policy, it says, "The superintendent and school administration will establish rules and procedures regarding student possession and use of cell phones in schools. These rules should seek to minimize the impact of cell phones on student behavior, mental health, and academic attainment. They may be designed for specific school buildings, grade levels, or similar criteria." So the policy leaves it up to the administrators and the buildings. And I think that makes sense.
Two questions. That's okay. One is, you know, do, putting something into the policy, we're telling teachers what to teach, and I'm not sure if that's, I don't know. I don't know that, to me, that doesn't seem appropriate, but I, well, acknowledge my limited scope of understanding. But, so that, that is a little bit, it seems a little out of place to me, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I can't remember my second question, so it doesn't matter. But, so that was just a question that I considered.
Are you Director Whitaker?
Yeah, I think the language that was just read by Board Chair, I think, gives the administrative power to Dr. Salo and the team to decide on buildings, grade levels, you know, what happens to cellphone. When I also did a lot of research on, like, the St. Paul School District, it depends on the school, it depends on the grade in which they are, right? And I think it will be almost a message for the school board to make that determination, right? Versus principals in the schools in consultation with the superintendent deciding that, okay, from, you know, fourth grade, they have the mental capability during mathematics to have their cell phones out versus we want them to be able to actually read from a book. So during reading, they should put it away, right? That's not something I have the potential to monitor. I'm sure superintendent and the teachers will do. So again, it comes down to governing versus managing. It sounds to me like we have a governing wedge in the policy, right? So then it's, if we are hearing things from the community that doesn't seem like the administrative piece is being managed properly, then that should be, you know, phone call to superintendent or to the administrators and say, hey, this is what we are hearing, not as a power of the board to try and change that versus contributing as a community member. That would just be my.
Also, they have their one-to-one devices to do the computations on.
I remembered. My other question is just, should this be at, should this really be something? And we talked about it at policy committee, or where we can suggest language and bring it? Because right now, we're just saying this isn't adequate, but I don't know what this, like, specific suggestions are. That was my question.
Director Holmes. So many things. I, St. Paul, and part of it right now, they have purpose and values in this one. And this policy is grounded in the following values, community members have expressed. One, clarity, consistency, and enforceability are important. Two, student safety is paramount. Three, two-way communication with the school and a way to reach their students must be clearly available to parents and guardians. Four, students should not be excluded from learning as a result of personal electronic device use. Five, students should be empowered to learn, to responsibly manage personal electronic devices. That's very important language. To kick it to the policy committee, this is important, this is the board conversation in general. Again, I don't think we've put the time into it. It's not management and governance. That's not it.
And you don't think that that's procedures?
No, I do not. It says the policy is grounded in, I do not.
Can I just, can I just follow? So just a little follow-up.
Thank you.
So during, I actually asked this question, I had it from two students in one of our high schools. Since the last board meeting, when you mentioned that, it's one of those policies that we wanted to discuss. And the information I gathered from the response there is not the fact that the policy is not strong enough, it's the fact that in individual classrooms, different teachers manage these policies differently, right? And if you and I face the fact, you and I don't really have, want the mandate or the power to control those environments, right? So the, the language exists, the policies exist. The advice now is going to be on the teachers in the classrooms to enforce that.
I don't think it's on the teachers alone because you have an administrative component that we talked about at length and the parameters that are being put in. It's, it's bringing all stakeholder voice to the table.
Right, but that's not things that you and I.
That's you and I disagree on that. That's you and I disagree on that because there's an accountability factor in what has come to this board. And so help me understand what you all think then the role is. It's just to have the MSBA policy and generic language and then we turn it over to the superintendent? And this is the same conversation we're having in the ad hoc committee too. So if there's a problem, then we send it up through the principal and we assume that the principal's gonna route it to the superintendent?
Well, I think that if we, if we study this carefully, you and I, or the, I should use the word, the board, right? The board can decide that at grade level four during mathematics, they can have their phones out. If teacher A enforces that and teacher B does not enforce that, you and I do not have that control. It will fall on administrative processes and procedures to enforce that. Would we agree with that?
You can.
Right, so if you agree with that, then the specific language at the individual school levels, I don't think is up to us as a board to have. That is up to the instructional leaders, the principals, and the superintendent to formulate that. We can still formulate it if we want, but the enforcement is not on us. And we have little to no control over that, if any at all.
Yeah, I.
Director Holmes.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I mean, you know, because that was one of the things too that I brought up that needed to be in policy, is that it can't just be reliant on the educator to do it. And a lot of these are, when you look at the other part of it. So that's why it also needs to be in policy, that, like, this needs to be a school-wide reinforcement because it just can't, when I'm in a classroom and you just rely on it just for me to be enforcing it, I'm gonna turn into one of those teachers, be like, I don't care because I'm done with the argument of this and nobody else around here is supporting me. And then you tell me to go tell the superintendent and go tell the school board. So then why, why don't we be proactive and have it in our policy? That it's everybody's responsibility, that it's the principal's responsibility to reinforce what the teacher's saying about it. That's the superintendent's responsibility to reinforce what the, and it's not in there. And in other ones, like here, even in Minneapolis, they have general policy for high school students, general policy for middle school students, general policy for K.A. students. And they even talk about here in the policy, how it can be used for educational purposes or times when it shouldn't be used for educational purposes. I'm talking about, let's be proactive in this policy. Let's not just leave it out there. The other, we've heard from teachers who've come here and said this, like, why? Why do I reinforce this when it's all on me? That ends up creating a bad, bad relationship with me and these kids that I have to sit there and argue with them every day about these cell phones. And then there's not that reinforcement from admin or whoever else it might be. So let's figure out what needs to be in there. I think that we should have this discussion.
Director Bowman.
We have got to separate procedure from policy or we're gonna always include policy with procedure. In my opinion, the things that are being discussed are procedural. And that's where you start to push the power down into the building. The board says, you're gonna have a policy to manage this and it's gonna be done in the superintendent's office. That's the direction of the board. That's our responsibility, sort of, at that point. The specifics that have been named right here, right now, are procedural in nature. And we may disagree with them, but it doesn't alter the fact that it's procedural in nature. So that's my biggest concern. Whatever we can do, I think the policies that stands right now works. I haven't heard any complaints from anybody. I haven't heard complaints from teachers. I haven't heard complaints from students. That's sort of the measurement of policies. When you've got problems with it, they surface up to the task. When you don't have problems with it, either everyone's ignoring it or it really isn't a problem. And that's the other thing that I'm concerned about when we talk about some of these policies. Isn't a problem? I don't know. But again, I don't want, you know, we have to be clear what's procedure and what's policy. What's our responsibility and what's the superintendent's responsibility? So I will stick to, I think this says what the board needs to say about the policy.
Okay, Director Bassett and then Director Helmbright.
My thing is to ask Terry, what do you think? You know, I mean, because I'm not gonna be in the classroom. But, and when I heard you say, I was really interested in your answer to that as to, it's not like you haven't, staff haven't come to you and said, this isn't a problem. So the policy that we're living under now is one that, wouldn't you say it's working?
Well, and again, there's probably a lot of things that people will come to me about, right? So.
I know, but I, I know, I mean, I, that's simplistic. Well, you're gonna get all rearranged like.
No, 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 no. I, I. So quite frankly, and this is like, so I even wanna open up this can of worms, right? But apparently. So what I'm getting used to, and I think it's gonna be part of, as a policy committee, what we ultimately determine, I am used to MSBA. I am used to the, there's very few APs separated from policy. And, and I can do, I'll do this either way, whatever the will of the board is in terms of separating or not separating. I think, I think that, yeah. So I think it was just passed, I totally understand the concerns about it in November being passed. Has it been implemented? And are there changes that already need to be made? I think are the questions and the priority of it, probably.
Uh, let's see. Bassett and then.
The only thing I would say is that, thank you for that. The only thing that I would ask, I do, I do think that there's some utility in having some secondary versus elementary thinking. You know, because some of it's just. You know, because some of it's just, yeah. The story itself.
Which is what we have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that I think that that is good and I think that's why...
And I do, I mean, I know what Caroline's talking about. And then I think phones and technology are getting demonized in a lot of ways. And, because that's one of the things the kids said that night too, is in classrooms where they can use it for learning, they're using it.
Yeah, it's allowed.
It's allowed, yeah. And I think that's, that's the other piece of it, is if we don't teach kids how to use it responsibly, and that's beyond policy.
So my question, it just comes out to me, and I guess this is sort of like with the F A C, is what is the purpose of the policy committee? Because in my mind, the policy committee wrestles with these things, comes up with some suggestive language, and then brings it to the board. Doesn't just say, this doesn't work, fix it, and then kind of throw it out there. Because right now, we have no, like, we're not, we're just sort of discussing the concept instead of working towards resolving something. And so that's really what comes out to me, is that that's why you have a policy committee, and then we work that out in the policy committee.
I was told not to bring that up tonight.
Okay, well, I, I don't speak to anybody outside the meeting, so I don't, I don't know anything else.
No, I was at the table.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know what to say, because I don't recall hearing that. But my point is that that seems to me to be the place that you would wrestle with that and bring, and even if we don't agree, bring multiple suggestions that have the board wrestle between them. But right now, it's just sort of like, more admiring the problem than trying to resolve the problem. And I feel like, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, the policy committee is the place to do that. And I'm happy to do the work. It's not that I have a question, concern about the work. I just don't know how we're going to resolve it here without any suggestions.
Because the other thing that we've talked about is this board is that, is really to go with the majority of the whole, the governance by the whole. Because it never fails, it goes to policy, and then it comes to the board itself, and then it gets, you know? We, and what happens is all the work that was done in the policy committee is just shoved off the cliff, because at that point, it doesn't come. So that's the gap that I experienced being on this policy committee for two years, is that early on, when we did have a couple of robust discussions, believe me, the whole policy committee dissolved into nothing for 12 months. But when we did have those things that we'd bring back to the board, and all of the work would go waste. So we either need to make a decision that we're going to work with, my view of it is two things. Terry's always going to have a policy committee on the administrative side. Because she's going to have always those policies in the day-to-day. The HR department's got their policies, they manage those policies, they're in ours. We have the 200 and 300 set of policies. That's the only thing that we manage is policies. So that's sort of the reality of it. What we do afterwards is we're going to govern those reviews by a full board. Or if we go with the policy committee thing, then this board needs to agree to the process, which will be, policy committee comes out, says boom, 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 boom. Board discusses those things, either sends them back to the policy committee or makes the vote, the vote. That's how it's supposed to work. But at this point, you are absolutely correct to question, what am I doing here? Because we've been spinning our wheels in that committee. So what is a board decision that needs to be made is how do we want to set up that committee? And we either are going to set that up or we're not going to. Either way, it'll be a decision. But it's not working the way it's set up right now. Because it's, we're not, we're not abiding by how a committee works with the whole. So I think we should just go with that. All of our policy work should just be done with the whole board until we can, until we either build trust or we, however that works. But I'm not willing to do the work twice.
No, I'm kind of lost.
I am not willing to do the work twice. I'm not willing to spend another night out at the meeting when I know when we come back to the table, all of our work will just be out the door. So we're not willing to do it.
That's first of all.
No, we have been expressing that for a while. I'm going to tell you that. Wait, excuse me.
She just acknowledged.
I know, but wait, I've been having this done all the way through. We weren't. And so we have talked about some of these policy problems before and how we've not done it right, and it falls undead here. So say it's not, is more of the affront to the work that I've done as a policy person or as a board member. So say you can go ahead.
I want to praise the policy committee on no more occasions.
But this, Director Holmes.
From what I can decipher from the train of paperwork, this did not have a robust discussion in the policy committee. It was just...
I can answer that though. I do have some background information on that, but I didn't have. So excuse me.
No.
There is an answer to it, just let me say that.
It was passed on that date, November 6th, in bulk, with a whole bunch of policies. There were questions that were started that didn't get addressed. And it was provided that it was just a legislative update. If anybody can produce to me the work that went into it, gathering the feedback and summarizing which staff did come. We had people coming to us talking about pouches because of the enforceability factor, you know, across the board. So it was done because there was a deadline put in place. We had to be in compliance. This is a complex issue with many layers that we haven't given the board's attention to. That's what I'm saying. That is true. In fact, when the, when the procedures went in place, Renee, you emailed the assistant superintendent and said you were blindsided by it because of the board and how we were getting people coming and talking to us and complaining at listening hours.
How long ago was that?
But that's what I'm saying. That's when it started. I'm trying to outline the process.
I understand. And if you want to go all the way back, we were all blindsided, okay? We were all blindsided by what happened.
I'm talking about the failed process that we as a board should have done. And I'm asking for a conversation on this important policy that can take our students into our campus, our families who are concerned about their students, our staff who need to be teaching, and the distraction is legitimate and real, but they also need the backup of the school-wide or the district-wide expectations and implementation. It hasn't been working this way, and that's why I think stricter language is required in the policy itself. That's what we rely on for accountability.
I just want to add one point, and that is, the policy was written by an attorney?
So what is the purpose of the board?
No, I'm, excuse me. When you say the things that it's not, you say this policy was not vetted. The policy was not vetted maybe by this board, but the policy itself. Okay, well, then I guess you know better, and I guess you could just call it a liar.
I'm not saying vetted, I'm saying putting the work into it.
Then you could just say what you want to say about it, but it was vetted legally.
Great.
So let's just be clear on that.
It was clear before.
All right, stop. Director Holmes.
So I would just like to state, District 287, they kind of do some policy work where they get information from the community and from students. They actually even create lesson plans for the teachers to teach as a way of getting feedback from students on different policies that are coming up. I, you know, we keep talking about that, about how to get more student voice into some of these things. So I wanted to just throw that out there, because it popped into my head.
I think the more versus the merrier. We just haven't figured out how to...
Okay.
Can we just send it back to the policy committee? Tell the policy committee to write the policy that they want to see, and then we'll write it back to the board? Because at this point, what are we going to do? Discuss it? It's 20 to 24.
I told her the policy committee.
I have concerns about the policy committee that I was not allowed to break up tonight. So that's a big discussion.
That's a whole nother discussion. We were going to just to discuss this policy.
You just recommended it go to the policy.
Yeah, I recommended go to the policy committee.
And I have concerns with how it's rolling.
Great, then write in the one and bring it to the whole board. I'm serious. I mean, because...
I'm not taking orders from you.
Because the reality is, is I don't know what it is. This is spinning wheels. This belongs to her to do.
One, two, and hands.
Is that not the same?
Your other hand.
I see your hand, Amy. She's writing.
All right, we, the motion was to have a discussion. We have a direction. You wanted to go to... Okay, you said the policy, you said...
I understand, policy committee. Maybe we could make this one work, you know?
We've got some resetting to do on the policy committee.
A lot of resetting.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we're helping a new administrator take it over, and we're going to, we're going to set it up right so it runs and functions really, really well.
Thank you.
The policy meetings are canceled this month. Director Holmes.
So I had brought up at agenda setting that there had been a request from board members to talk about the overall policy committee. And then Terry had brought up that Amy's going to be starting it. So there's going to be some revamping that will be done within the committee itself. So just in full transparency, that's kind of where we left our discussion at, at agenda setting. So I don't know if it needs to come back as a full discussion for the board or what.
What needs a...
What I mean transparency.
If there's concern, let's send it to the policy committee. Reba, I sent you my concern.
Well, we're not going to be committed. It's going to sit in Ligo, Ligo for a while.
So, so there's a meeting scheduled for the ninth. We're not ready. We had spring break, so we didn't have, didn't have a chance to be ready. And then the next meeting is the 22nd. Scheduled for the 22nd, which now is the board meeting. So the next one is the 7th. So if we get things together to bring to the policy committee before that, we will. And otherwise, we will on the 7th.
7th of May?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think we can live.
Okay.
I don't think we're on work.
Isn't our, I know, isn't our policy committee, is that you, you, and you?
Yeah, but that does remind me, just on a separate note, that we need to talk, we need to do committee assignments. And so I'm happy that that... Just, I'm very, I'm too happy to give that to, but I think he's a very nice guy.
They just went alert.
Okay. For now.
It is... Yes, it is the three.
Time for us.
Right.
It's who you are.
So we're going to bring it to the policy committee, the re-named policy committee, and work through it.
Oh, we may say that.
May, 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 second.
Okay.
All right.
It will be the number one. It will be the first agenda.
All right, I believe we have exhausted our agenda for our session. And I know the rest of us are exhausted. I'm going to work here.
This way, please, stay in this way.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Interesting.
I have a second one. My second win. Thanks, Molly.
Yes, my name is a toll on the record.